Welcome to the December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Board Meeting, the last of two thousand and twenty-three. Can you roll call?
Great.
I'm not choking. Chair Lofaro.
President.
Vice Chair Finerty.
Present.
The Secretary is here. Board Member Lutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Catalinato, I guess, is going to be late, and Board Member Fulham is out today. We have a quorum.
Great. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair. Board Member Catalinato.
Here you are, Craig.
Hey, Craig's in the house.
Welcome. Okay, so our first, oh, no, any minutes, Gloria?
Yes, November nine and November sixteen.
November nine and sixteen. Motion. Motion by Dennis, second by George, all in favor. No substitutions. Six in favor, one absent for the minutes. So we're going to look at the Planning Board meeting dates for two thousand and twenty-four. Do we have a document here?
It was in the packet.
Do we have a packet?
Now, we just have the agenda.
We just, yeah. Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I just want to point out that we have no evening session on November twenty-first, which is typical around the holiday.
Oh, so no, yeah, no PM.
Yeah.
They have one a month, in November and December, yeah.
Okay, do we have to vote on this, Claire?
Yes, you do.
Yeah, so a motion to adopt the calendar for two thousand and twenty-four. Motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor. No substitutions, six in favor, one absent. So we're going to move on to the referrals, Claire?
The first one, Cara Back is here, Claire.
Great. Cara, come.
Community Housing Fund Project Plan.
These are all pieces of legislation that are pending in front of the Town Board now?
Currently, yes.
For their twenty-first meeting, or?
It's on the twenty-first.
This is on the twenty-first.
Okay, so there's a little squeeze here.
So, good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to present this plan to you. Parts of this community housing fund plan before you today will be used as an addendum to the town's housing plan that was created by VHB in two thousand and twenty-two and adopted by the Town Board on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. The two thousand and twenty-two housing plan was prepared prior to the establishment of the Community Housing Fund Tax and the Community Housing Fund Advisory Board. The addendum was prepared after the Community Housing Fund Advisory Board was formed, and it is intended to provide the mission statement of the Community Housing Fund Advisory Board, as well as its role and the board's operating procedures. In addition, the addendum lists eligible funding programs designed to make housing more affordable and accessible in the town. The town's housing department researched housing programs that are eligible under the law and those affordable housing programs that are working in other resort communities across the country. Members of the CHF Advisory Board prepared a year-end report that aims to evaluate the requirements, challenges, and opportunities within the town's hamlet communities. This work product of the Advisory Board included as pages seven through forty-five in the document before you, but it will not be submitted as an amendment to the town's housing plan. Rather, it will be used by the Advisory Board when making recommendations for the allocation of CHF financial support to the eligible funding programs. It is expected that the Advisory Board will make updates at the end of each year. The Housing Department created a variety of programs that can be funded under the CHF. Most of these programs do not create new density, but rather use existing home stock and make it more affordable. So drawing your attention to pages forty-six through fifty-one of the document before you, I'd like to introduce some of the programs that have developed for the CHF funding.
We don't have them.
Okay, so you have the, okay, you don't have the ones that were sent to you?
No. No, this is the first time I've seen this.
Okay, let's go through the one then that's before you. The pages will have changed, so we're going to look at pages... seven. The funding programs start on page seven.
You don't have got it?
You've got it.
Thank you.
So there are four programs for first-time homebuyers. There's a down payment assistance program. CHF will loan a first-time homebuyer part of the down payment needed to purchase a home. There are no monthly payments, and the loan is paid at zero percent interest when the buyer sells or refinances the home. There's a shared equity program. CHF will pay a percentage of the cost of the home and then shares in the appreciation of the home's value when the home is sold or refinanced. There's a remodel program where CHF loans a first-time homebuyer the money needed to make necessary repairs to an all dilapidated or foreclosed property to make the home livable. And there's an employer-assisted down payment program. CHF will work with employers, offer a down payment assistance program to their first-time homebuyer employees, and it include match programs, interest rate buydowns, deferred, and repayment loans. There is an affordable easement program which will assist developers who want to build new affordable housing. There are three programs in the plan that will assist in creating affordable rentals. There's an accessory apartment program where CHF funds can be used by an existing homeowner to create an accessory apartment in their home for extra income or to house a family member. There's motel conversion program where CHF funds can provide low-interest loans to assist in the rehabilitation of old motels for the town's seasonal and year-round workforce. There's an adaptive reuse program. CHF funds can be used to convert non-residential commercial property into affordable rental housing. There's also a program where CHF funding can be used for direct mortgage assistance to the town's volunteer essential workers in order to make their home more affordable. There is a CHF funding program to assist the town's workforce, seniors and disabled, to be able to live in the town. So I thank you for your consideration of this addendum to the town's housing plan, and if you have any questions, I'm available to answer.
Cara, I do. I mean, this is all new to us. I don't think we were, we had this too much in advance, if at all. What of the elements do they pertain to the Planning Board specifically?
So specifically, this will be an update to the town's housing plan, which is part of the comprehensive plan, and that's why it's really before you. But with regard to, this is really going to be a document for the CHF Advisory Board to be able to use. It will outline the programs that are available with the CHF funding. These are programs that are eligible under the law, and it also kind of gives them guidance as to what their role is, what their procedures are to be with regard to when an application for funding is submitted to the Housing Department, how they consider it, and then how they make their recommendations to the Town Board.
So when you say under the law, you mean New York State law?
Yeah, so under the, yes, under the CHF law and Town Law one forty.
So are any of these, any of the programs eventually going to have to come before the Town Board, the Planning Board approval? So for example, you talked about converting commercial real estate into affordable apartments. Is that going to have?
Sure, that could come before the Planning Board if there is a developer that is looking for funding to develop new housing. That would come before the Planning Board as well. But most of these programs will not come before the Planning Board. First-time homebuyer down payment assistance, the accessory apartment funding, things like that, because most of these funds, most of these programs do not create new density.
What about the affordable easements of developers? I mean, will that come before this board?
Yeah, so I think that's what you were referring to, yes. So that is probably one of the programs that could. If we have a developer who wants to develop new housing, one of the programs that we're offering is to create, give funding for an affordable easement. So that, to keep that, those homes affordable, the town would buy an easement from the developer, and that easement would remain on the property. So those homes would remain affordable, and the people that would be qualified for them would be, would have required, there would be required an income qualification for that.
And that's in perpetuity?
Yes.
I would think motel conversion would also come before this.
Yes, yes.
Because it does, it does now if it goes from motel, like to condo or something.
Yes, yep, sure.
Do we have enough flexibility within zoning to accommodate most or all of these things without, you know, rewriting legislation or changing code?
Yeah, so some of these projects may require a change in zone, you know, and it's something that if the Town Board, you know, feels that it's necessary, we could certainly do more with some changes to the zoning code.
But that would be at the Town Board, the decision level, not us.
Correct, yep.
But we would get a referral on that as well?
Yes.
Any changes to some of them?
Okay. All right.
Sorry, George. Any of this, so we're talking here about possibly, I guess, it comes back to a question we've asked when we looked at housing plan before, but location of somebody's proposed affordable, and how it is spread across the town. And it comes back to, you know, availability of land, purchase price of land. How are we going to ensure that, you know, we don't end up pushing a lot of this type of development, which we all agree is needed, towards one section of the town versus the other section?
So the plan does have a requirement in there that one part of the town can't be burdened with the housing, you know, more than another part. So that you can't concentrate affordable housing in one area of the town more than any other. So that's already in the housing plan.
So Cara, I know you and I spoke directly about this. My concern with multifamily especially, this is the way the pilots are implemented. And I think, you know, town-wide, we need to consider that. You know, we may have affordability in hamlet A, B, or C, but we need to look at the school district that A, B, and C are connected to. I know in the West, you know, you have, what, six or seven different hamlets that are connected ultimately to the West Hamton School District. So you may say, oh, there are only, you know, five or six affordable units here or there, but when you take the cumulative effect and you put it in, you know, on that same school district, and it's by way of pilot, then I start to fear that that school district's not going to be compensated for the actual impact. So I think we really need to focus strongly on, you know, making sure, well, you know, we discussed it, I want pilot reform. But in the absence of pilot reform, we need to look at cumulative totals within the school district.
Yeah, so it's important to know that this is a guide for the CHF Advisory Board. The CHF Advisory Board does not make any decisions with regard to the housing. They just make recommendations to the Town Board. So the Town Board should, you know, certainly, they're going to be the decision-maker, and they have to take into account all of those kind of things when making their decision.
So the advisory will not?
The Advisory Board, not saying that they won't, it should be something that they consider when making their recommendations, but they don't, they're not the decision-maker.
So are we making recommendations here on this referral, or this is just to educate us?
This would be a response to the Town Board.
Well, there's a response. I think Craig's comments.
That concerns with new multifamily developments.
Yeah, just the cumulative impact on school districts in relation to a pilot.
Yeah, looking at across, by, across school district rather than just by hamlet.
Correct.
And then George's concern about equitable distribution amongst the very east and west in the town. Any other? Tom?
No, I did want to ask you, maybe you could speak about the members and the membership of the Advisory Board. That's obviously a critical piece in this, and I just thought maybe you could speak. I know they were appointed by the Town Board.
Yes, yeah, it's an annual appointment. We have twelve on our board right now, and then the law requires them to come from different areas with experience in housing. So there's a, you know, somebody on the, on the board that has real estate experience, somebody on the board that has banking experience. If villages opt in, they are, they are required to have representation on the, on the board. So, you know, that's, yeah, that's how it works.
And as far as the...
What about geographic dispersment?
So the Town Board, when they selected, the board members, they did try and make sure that there was somebody from all areas of the town, east and west. We did get a good number of applications for people who wanted to participate on the board.
Well, that's good.
So, yeah, so it was terrific, and so we were able to do that, to, yeah, to select from all the areas, yeah.
And as far as supporting their work, you're obviously, you're going to be working with them very closely, and it will be your staff that'll do kind of the administrative support stuff?
Correct, yep. Absolutely.
Maybe one last, one other question. So the funding they were talking about here, that was coming from the half percent real estate tax principally. The community housing board will have total discretion, I mean, this is meant to be for people who live and work in the town of Southampton, for the housing units that will be created.
So one of the programs that I'm developing is for the town's workforce, and one of the programs is a workforce easement. So if somebody either owns a home or would like to buy a home and restrict it for the town's workforce, somebody who works within the town at least thirty hours a week, we would purchase an easement from them, which really would kind of, the rent would have to be affordable and the tenant would have to be income-qualified. And our easement would make up the difference between the market rent that they could obtain and the rent that they would get from renting it out to somebody at the affordable rent and somebody in the workforce. And it's, it's meant to kind of do just that, kind of keep the workforce, give them the ability to live within the town.
What's the financial mechanism? You say the town buys an easement, so those monies come from CPF?
CHF.
CHF, and then, so there's a whole financial management component?
Yes, there is.
My only comment, and I don't know if this falls on your committee, Cara, but there's really a pressing need out here for seasonal dormitory-type housing, similar to a youth hostel. The only example we have now is golf courses, employee housing on golf courses, but they, those uses typically have large land masses where they can be properly sited, but I'm thinking more like restaurants, landscaping contractors. Right now, the workforce for those businesses, seasonal dependent businesses are, you know, haphazard, most times illegal, stuff into group houses. So to the extent that you, your committee can develop some sort of, I don't know, guidelines, template where they can be located legally with regulatory oversight, I think it would be, it's a pressing need in the town. I'm hearing from a lot of business owners.
Yeah.
Restaurants especially.
That's a really good point.
Good point. So we're working on doing some amendments to the accessory apartment law that might allow businesses to have accessory apartments that, for their workforce. So it's, it's developing, you know?
Good.
Okay, so I'll add that as like a third, maybe a point?
Yeah, just something that needs to be addressed on the to-do list.
Okay, great.
There shall be three or four, right?
Regarding the makeup of the advisory, you know, it's really not a matter for this board, I wasn't going to bring it up, but Tom had mentioned it. It says, "Rules for the CHF Advisory Board. Individual board members shall act without taint of conflict interest or without any appearance of conflict of interest." I know that you have a member of the board that's on the ZVA, and that that member is also one of the founding members of East and Yimby, a yes in my backyard. I see that as a big old pile of conflict. I do, and I don't mean to be mean, I don't, but, and, you know, when we consider such matters, and they're delicate and emotional, I really want the community to think that it's a fair shake, it's an honest conversation, there's an integrity to it all. This seems conflitual to me.
Do you have any ethics, Greg?
So, yeah, they are subject to the ethics rules, so, as any board member is.
Yeah. Well...
Okay, I spoke my piece.
Yeah, I took it. Can you make a note of that?
In your referral?
Yeah, that people serving on the Advisory Board are subject to the ethics code.
That's just a statement, right?
Automatically, right?
Yeah, they are, yeah.
I think that's just a statement, isn't it? Do you want your comments to specifically?
I don't know, I think I just framed it.
Well, you can't, we can't just pick something out, but clearly it's, it's there, it's an issue.
Well, first...
Well, this is, I mean, I think you're responding to this summary of like the funding. The, that's been created, that board is there. I think you want to maybe, you know, have a general statement at the beginning that, you know, you support the efforts of providing alternative funding, and this seems to be in line with the plan as adopted prior, and then have the three comments that we've done to date.
Can you just briefly say the three comments?
Sure.
I think there were four.
Okay, if I missed something, yeah, we can add something. Cumulative impacts to school districts, not just hamlets. Concern about equitable distribution across east and west of the town for the distribution of funds for affordable housing. And then seasonal dormitory, suggest guidelines and legislation for seasonal dormitory housing need such as restaurants and landscapers, et cetera.
Was the first one about the pilot?
Yeah.
Did you want me to say anything about pilot?
Yeah, well, that was Craig's comment. The first comment.
Yeah, well, it's, can you read it again? Because it would be in relation to pilot.
In relation to cumulative impacts to school districts, not just hamlets, in relation to possibly using pilots?
I think Craig was actually against using pilots, right? So then he reduced the taxes.
Well, I'm against using pilots right now under the current structure of them because the school districts are being underfunded.
Right, you lose out on taxes once it...
Right, and if you have a cumulative effect stacking of that, what's going to happen is the school districts could potentially go into crisis, right? You have the school tax cap that could only go this far.
Of using pilots, of using pilots, okay.
Review the requirements of a pilot.
Yeah.
These are the distribution and impact on school districts.
Right, and, you know, we weigh, oftentimes, we'll get a studies thing, you know, with the, you know, the school impact study shows six to seven kids, but we don't really do a post-construction analysis of such things. And maybe we can go back a year later and say, okay, you know, a Nelson Pope study said five children. We go back to the school district, can you tell what the actual impact on the schools? Oh, it's twelve. And then we chart this data, and if we see that the data is consistent or inconsistent, then we can, we can go to the state or Town Board, go to the state, saying we are being consistently underfunded by way of pilot, and if you want to have community acceptance and you want fairness, then we need to address these things.
Yeah.
That's a good point, because, you know, Nelson, typically those kinds of studies that are used to come up with these projections are based on, we don't really know what the basis of their, of their studies are, right? So we're, they're saying we're going to get five kids, when in fact we're going to get fifteen or twenty.
What are they basing on?
And we have to adjust for that because, you know, our tier is a little bit different. People don't have, you know, even, even parking and number of cars has to be adjusted because of the fact that we don't have real public transportation out here.
Correct, yeah.
And maybe, I just want to go back to the question I was asking, Cara, where, so, you know, we have the community fund, Housing Fund, doing these projects for affordable housing. We're trying to get affordable housing, we're going to do subdivisions based on the number of lots, but then we also have, you know, the other side of, we have private developers coming in and taking money from the state, which then, from what I'm understanding, you kind of, you can't, that can't, they can't then dictate who occupies these rentals. Even if it might be listed as affordable, it's not, it's not limited to people who live or work in the town of Southampton, it means it's actually open for anybody who wants to occupy it, meets the requirement. So how is that all being, you know, grouped together and considered in the overall scheme of where things are located? Do we account, is the Housing Fund looking at all of that when they, when they do this?
Sure, so we, you kind of violate fair housing laws in any respect, so whenever you're taking funding. So that would include this as well. The easement that I'm mentioning, where somebody has, is required to work in the town at least thirty hours a week, has been determined not to violate fair housing. So that is a restriction that we can place on it. We're not saying that you have to now work in the town of Southampton in order to be able to live there. We're saying that whoever is going to live there must work, yeah.
Okay, any other comments? Cara got them all?
So I'm going to add to your review, the use of the pilots and cumulative impacts to school districts, not just hamlets, and then I want to add after that, suggested value, investigation of built projects and comparing projected and actual data.
Yeah, that's right, thank you.
Yeah.
Good.
So that'll be four items, two I just mentioned, and then the other two that I had mentioned. So four, but the Planning Board generally supports the direction of the funding.
Yeah.
Uh-huh, and the guidelines, okay.
It's a big, a big project.
I think, I think you made a recommendation at one point that Cara's department has sufficient personnel to be able to...
There you go. We're on your side, Cara.
I've got your comments from back then.
Make it number one.
That's appreciated.
That's why you brought your staff.
We want it done as well, right?
So that'll be another recommendation from you, I think, if you really wanted that.
So Claire, you'll let us know those?
Yeah, and I can add that, because I had to language the facts in your previous report. So I will send you that after it's done.
Please.
And the Advisory Board members are volunteers, correct?
Yes. Good, well, thank you very much. Happy to have you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, motion to accept the referral as written, motion by...
Send a second by Craig, all in favor. No substitutions, six in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. Then we have the Bridgehampton Historic Overlay District.
Yes, you saw this, and you had a generally favorable...
This Kelly Doris?
Yes.
Hi, Kelly.
Thank you for having me here.
It was a great presentation by the historian, and you were very in favor of it. But they've changed course a little bit, and it's now going to become an overlay district for that area, and in order to do that, it's a different part of the code, and so you'd have to weigh in on that portion of it. So, right, it would be an amendment to the zoning code to create the overlay district and then an amendment to the zoning map. So it's just really a follow-up from the last hearing, from our last hearing and referral. The only difference between the last time you saw this and now, there are three residential properties that have been taken out because they decided to opt out of the historic district. It's primarily commercial, so they were given the option of whether to stay in or not.
Can you tell us what they are? The HC, are they hamlet?
No, they're R twenty. The ones that dropped out?
Yes.
They're R twenty.
But they're commercial.
No, I'm sorry, the ones that dropped out are R twenty. The ones that are still in are all different types of commercial.
So this is on the main street?
On the main street, yeah. Actually, I don't know if you can see it, there's a map up there. It's right on the main street in Bridgehampton. Yeah, it's kind of far away.
So you have an opportunity to opt out of this overlay district?
Only the residential, because there were only a handful of residential in the whole entire initial proposed districts, and there was one property owner that was strongly against being included, so then the Town Board wanted to give the other five residential properties, property owners, the option of whether to stay in or not. And there's a potential maybe in the future to expand the historic district or to just create another one just for residential.
Huh, so the bus, is it just the bus somewhere? And bridge one?
Is that the bus, right here?
No, that's the corner one with the office, but that's...
That might have been in there originally that was taken out. The ones...
What's the cross street?
This one is Butter Lane. So, the, mostly the residential ones, there were some on Lumber Lane and then Hole Lane, kind of right in here. There were like, there's a cluster of residential properties and those were taken out.
That's the corner of Fallen Ocean, I think.
Yeah, yeah, oh, okay.
And what was the reason to change from a historic district to an overlay district?
Well, it's still a historic district, but we just wanted to take it a step further and actually make it an overlay district so that it could be incorporated into the zoning code and on the zoning map. And it really makes it easier, I mean, if you're in the historic district and you own a property, you're going to know you're in the historic district. But it makes it easier for the future owners or someone that's looking at the property, just to look it up and look at the zoning map and see, okay, this is in the historic district. And then also there'll be a separate section in the zoning code, even though we have language in there already about what can and can't be done within a historic district. This will actually say Bull's Head, Main Street, Historic Overlay District. So, then you can be guided to that section and know, know what you're supposed to do. So, it just makes it a little bit easier for property owners and future owners and really anyone just trying to figure out, what can I do with this property?
Are there any special exception standards applied to this?
No.
It'll be overlay district standards. Now, have they been developed?
Yes, but they're based on the. Yeah, well, really, they just say that they, it just kind of reiterates what was already in the code already, but it just states that there's a referral. If you're in the historic district, there's going to be a referral to the landmarks and historic districts board. And you do have to get a certificate of appropriateness anytime you're going to do any exterior alterations. If it's interior, you don't have to go to the landmarks board, but anything exterior that can be seen from a public street or a public right-of-way. So, basically, if you're walking down the sidewalk or you're walking down the road, if you can see it, then you're going to need to go to the landmarks board first before you make any change.
So, the applications that are in the hopper now are exempt from the overlay district?
If they were in before this was noticed for a public hearing and they have a building permit in the works, then they can continue with that. But as of the initial notice of public hearing, anyone that's applying for new building permit has to go to the landmarks historic districts board.
And so, do you have a date, a date certain on that?
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I don't have the original publication before me, when it was published in the paper. But the initial hearing, I was, because there's activity going on in Bridgehampton, we want to be sure. Yes, yes. And this, when we noticed the original public hearing for the historic district, that was referred to the chief building inspector. And we made sure to make a flag in GIS, so the building department and anyone else, you know, planning, looking at that could see that.
So, it stops at Snake Hollow?
Um, let me see where we, yep, there's, there's Snake Hollow there.
Yeah.
And Hillguth Lane kind of comes down there.
Yeah. Well, as a Bridgehampton native, I'm fully in support of it, so, and I see that the Bridgehampton Civic Association is in full support. Their public hearing, so, any other, other comments from anybody on the board? This is.
Keep it short and sweet.
Yeah, long time, long, long time coming and long overdue.
I have to say, the board supports the implementation of the order.
Is there an opportunity to increase the parking space fee that was set in nineteen ninety-two, a two thousand dollars in space? So, five, five parking spaces, oh, great. You're going to use Visa or Amex? It's absurd, you know?
Because there are a lot of other hamlets that have five parking fees.
Nineteen ninety-two. And they're still waving in front of us.
Yeah, and where is the, where is the parking fund?
Yeah.
Has it been absorbed into the general fund?
No, no, it's separate, it's separate.
Yeah?
Yeah, definitely.
Bridgehampton, you don't know how much it is?
Yeah.
It's in Cayman Islands. Take that off, strike that from the net.
Okay, so, let's have a vote on this. Motion by Gloria, second by Craig, all in favor. Post-extension, six in favor, one absent, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, you too.
So, four is now mending the town code three thirty eighty-four to allow additional height for new dwellings with gabled roofs located in the flood zones.
Yes, so this one I just learned about.
Lucky person to present it to you, I have com, I have copies of it. I think this is pretty straightforward, this is just a tool that actually you use. If this is a commercial building, you could, you could vary it to add like architectural elements to this. This would give the planning.
We're just on the third, the last of height.
We can skip, we can skip to the.
Yeah, yeah.
Who wants to to hers? And then we'll go to.
Well, this is not going to take more than two minutes.
Yeah, I think it's a quickie.
So, you need to break.
This'll just be to give the option to do gabled roofs up to three feet above it as an architectural feature, you know, on these. So, it would not allow them to go further for a flat roof, but it would just give them the ability to do gabled roof up to three feet above what they would be permitted in that zone. As rights, because I think the ZBA gets a lot of these where people are, you know, designing.
So, when you're in a flood zone, how many feet do you have to elevate the house?
See, you can go above two feet from the base floor, the thirty-two feet for a house.
So, two feet, and then you start, start at two feet above, and then thirty-two feet, and now this gives you three more feet.
There would be three more feet to have a more of an architectural feature for gabeling.
Gabeling, and that's defined so that people are not confused?
Yeah, gabled roof.
You still have to comply with the pyramid.
You still have to comply with pyramid, that does not have the pyramid law.
And it says that?
Uh, there's no change to the pyramid section. It's just.
Is that referenced in here?
Pyramid section, it is not, because that's not changing.
I know, but I think we should make some reference to it here. If we ask the question, somebody else is going to ask the question.
Maybe it should be stated at one time.
So, there's no change to the pyramid law?
Yeah, it does not impact the pyramid.
Okay.
Right, it's a good point.
Any other comments? Motion to accept it with that one change, recommendation?
Right.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by George, all in favor. Post-extension, six in favor, one absent. Thank you. Janice, come speak to us.
And me. And Claire. So, we, good afternoon, everybody. We're here with a sample staff report format, a new shiny new way of doing staff reports that make it very, actually, passing them out to you now.
Colors and everything, it's a Christmas miracle.
It's a Christmas gift.
Did I take your seat? No, no, don't at all. So, Seth actually inserted one of your more recent applications, just doesn't give it a go. And we want to get your feedback just on the form and its format. This would be the way that we would fill out, this is a staff report, right? And it's graphic and it's, it's somewhere where you, your eyes know where to go. You know, like, it's not a ten-page dissertation. Now, that doesn't mean that we're not going to attach.
My eight-page dissertation will be attached.
Like, you know, when there's special exception standards and we have to go through that with a narrative, that would be attached. And the other thing is, in the staff reports as they are today, we're cutting out and pasting in what other people say.
Like the referrals.
Referrals, which doesn't make any sense, those should just be attachments on their letterhead and the record. You don't need to cut and paste it into a separate document, it's just, you know, it's a fire district.
As long as we have it.
As long as you have it. But now you'll actually be able to say which agency received a referral, so you can say, well, what did Highway say? I see we referred it to them, where's the Highway referral? You know, like, it's much easier to see who you sent it to. Who we send it to is prescribed by the code or the county charter or, you know, there's different reasons why we send, you know, the state. Whoever needs to get it, gets it, and we delineate who received it, and then you know you're waiting to hear back from them before you act. So, so just to go through it.
Tell us about the link.
Oh, the other thing, this is the second page.
I'm on the second page.
So, the first page.
Starts with, you know, it's a staff report, you can identify the planner very easily, the application information, tax map, hamlet, you know.
I put Southampton Dog as the example.
Yeah, we filled it in, yeah. So, and then the application type, so you know it's not just a site plan, but there's a special exception. So, then you know there's going to be some kind of an attachment, we're going to go through the standards. Unless they're just the general standards, but still we'll have something in there. You know, O file map, and it will indicate the action deadline if it's been deemed complete. This, it's, this is a staff report, so you know it's already been deemed complete technically, so it would be on there, the action deadline, yeah. The secret status, secret status, or should we say secret classification?
That would be classification.
Yeah, so it's not really status. Secret classification.
Secret class, yeah. And determination.
And then the determination. And then we also know here, this is for us too, you know, like, if an EMB is filing is required, you know, so we can look back and know.
What's an EMB?
Environmental Notice Bulletin. So, anybody who wants to know anything that's going on in the world of environmental work, go on the New York State Environmental Notice Bulletin. By law, we're all required to post our projects there. So, you'll, all the times that you've done neg decks, pos decks.
New York State EMB?
Yep, New York State Environmental Notice Bulletin, all the things you do are on there.
Oh, good.
We have to put them there, and you can see all other municipalities' projects on there.
So, is it required or not required?
Sometimes.
Sometimes it's required.
Depends. Yeah, in this case, it's a type-two action, so no further environmental review. But if you had to type one action, all of them must go to the EMBs.
Interesting, here is new information.
If you see environmental, if you see town board resolutions, you'll see, and the clerk is directed, or actually now they direct land management to file this in the EMB, whenever they take a secret action. So, it gets filed. We do this normally here without you having to direct anybody in a resolution, we know we have to do it.
We have to do it by their state law.
Yeah, we have to do it. So, then a little box for project description, plan review, meaning what plans are included.
And we're asking for building elevations.
Renderings. So, maybe we should add. Yeah, add a little box, we have a space. Not just elevations. We should write renderings. So, we'll have a little space for that, under grading.
Another box for renderings?
Yeah, right above other. And then a spot for you to see an aerial, and this plan spot, they look kind of microscopic. Our, our idea here was to put a hyperlink so that you could just click it and you'll get taken to the page where you'll have the plans. Um, then if you, I don't know if you want to go over this side first and then go on, or you want to give me all the comments at the end? Then you flip it over, like I mentioned, all the referrals, you know, when the hearing is, when the comments are due. And then sort of a section for comp plan best practices.
Go wait, Janice, go back to project administration. What happens for if it's an action deadline?
It's on the front, front would have the action deadline. You begin this report, it was complete.
Oh, action deadline, application type, okay, great.
So, just a net, a net, a net application type, I mean, that's obviously not an all-inclusive type we do either. So, we don't have revegetation applications or change of, change of, change of covenants, which we, which we get.
The re-vedge is now going to be.
It's now administrative.
Now in your hands.
Right, we knew we recommended it.
So, do you want it to say other and then a line?
Well, we wouldn't do a, we wouldn't do a staff report for re-vedge. Do a resolution.
Here's my, here's my question. The reports that we review and adopt are either pre-application reports, pre-submission conference reports, ZBA referrals. Does this form encompass, it substitutes for all those forms?
Uh, not ZBA, I could.
How about referral, application type, should we put referral, make a box? We have subdivision, site plan, special exception, construction permit, is that demolition?
Construction permit is the same thing as a site plan.
Why do we have that then as a construction permit?
It's treated like a site plan, so we review a report just like a site plan.
But this is going to be the format for the pre-application reports?
Pre-application reports, pre-submission reports, site plan, pre-sub, pre-submission reports.
No, if you want a separate page with like a written paragraph from us about, you know, the issues or opportunities, we can do that. Like I said, but the, but the main, like, what you're looking for when you get something.
This is like an index.
Almost like a cover.
It's a cover sheet, but we also don't want to write these dissertations every time, it takes a long time to go through them, it takes a lot to read them. And most of it is referrals and this information right here. And then when we get to the real planning recommendation, we're happy to write a small, you know, one-page memo from the planner recommending something, if you want.
Janice, I would say under application type, we're not, we've eliminated referrals, we have referrals on our agenda.
But referrals are in the form of resolutions. So, anything to date, these, this was focused on anything that produced a staff report.
Yeah, like applications, this is not ZBA referrals, town board referrals.
We could do that.
We could, this is why we're here, to get feedback from you as to what you want.
If this works, we could go that next step.
I mean, for example, on our agenda, we just have three town board referrals. So, it would be nice to know if we get the agenda and we get sheets each of these for each thing, that they're going to be referrals.
I think we would make a separate thing tailored to being a referral document, instead of trying, because this doesn't make sense to be like.
You don't have, you don't have all this stuff in the back, it doesn't, doesn't make sense.
Unless it is a ZBA, like coordinated review, and you're trying to review an application with the ZBA, maybe there, you know, there's some custom things there.
So, you don't want to include it here, you want to make a separate sheet?
I think we can make a separate, we could easily, and we can make them different colors, so you know when you get a red one, it's a referral. So, when you get a blue one, it's that. You know, like, you want to be able to know what you're dealing with, and that's, we could do that.
One of those lines should, you know, we do sometimes with the work with the planner, we change the staff report. So, should there be a version that says draft and then says final? You know, because they, when they come into us, we sometimes work and tweak it and, you know, then we get it back again later.
What would that?
Um, in all honesty, like, we, you know, we should think about that, that's a good point. Because I don't have a good answer at the moment.
Somehow, so when we look at it.
Or at least have it dated?
I'm almost leaning toward like there's a memo that goes, you know, I'm trying to cut down on the map paper, but maybe this isn't enough. Maybe you're looking for a little more verbiage or something, justifying something or another that you would wordsmith? Is that what you're looking to have?
I mean, I think what we see a lot of is that the planner puts down his or her thoughts on the application. But sometimes there's questions that they actually don't fill out completely, looking for our input at the meeting. Or without that, we come and say, well, what about this, what about that? So, there's, so there's an iterative process.
Well, what if we have, so I would like personally to allow the planner to have a space to put their own recommendation. But also, it sounds like you want a space to have your, maybe we should have planning board concerns as a section, right? Like, because the planning recommendation is one thing. You may or may not take our recommendation, but we should be able to give it to you. We will, we're not here to, you know, just be scribes, we're, we are professionals and we have recommendations to give to you based on all of our understanding, but you could take it or leave it. So, if you want to leave it, it would be better to have the planning recommendation and then the planning board concerns.
Well, I mean, you have it all over on the second page, right? You have planning recommendations.
Right, but I don't have a spot for planning board.
Maybe you can squeeze in a section there for.
It should be.
But, but don't you, you need a, I'm sorry, Dennis, you need to have, if this is the report, you need to have a final report that is an agreement between the board and the planner, which is what the, when, the iterative process now, we get something in the packet. There are questions raised by the planner that he or she wants to discuss with us, or there are changes or additions that we make. And then the staff report gets redone in the, with the final combined version.
Right, so I'm suggesting there is no fin, uh, you know, we could give you this as the tool in the meeting.
Which is great.
And identify your issues on this document at the meeting, and then type up a report, and then you adopt. If there's a report to adopt, you know.
Well, usually we have to, right? Yeah, because that's what's filed.
Yeah, that goes to my, my.
So, this is more of an at-a-glance thing to help us synthesize all this information that you're getting, that you need to look at.
It's like a blueprint, instead of getting a packet.
Are you, are you putting down anything more than you normally, are you changing the format?
Changing the format.
Are you giving any more input than you normally would with anything within your application? What I don't want to do is create a foil issue or a potential litigation issue if staff, and this doesn't normally happen, but it shouldn't happen if staff says one thing and goes to another, creates, if it's a draft report, it's a final report, so I'm just saying, I'm creating. If it's a draft report, it's a final report. So I'm just saying, are we creating any document that, I know the format's changing, but are we just reconfiguring what we already do?
Well, I'm not sure that we ever, we always write like respectfully submitted or whatever and we give our report, but I'm not sure that we have a section in any of that report that gives our recommendation. It's usually.
I would say planning staff recommends this. Planning board disagrees, once or twice.
We usually say it verbally, but it's not.
But, no, and then I'd say the planning board finds. Planning board, you know, I leave the planning staff recommends this, you know, four trees and planning board finds, they want six trees. Because of the standard being involved at landscaping for screening, you know, just an example. So it's just, you know, it's a little difference of opinion, but no, you know.
So what, what if we had like, so we have comp plan recommendations slash best practices, which this one could use a little more words. I don't know what I'm, you know.
Oh, this was just an example. Not, not, please don't look at what, what the substance is. This is just, I took a simple application and, and presented it to you.
But I just wanted to address. I just wanted to address Christine's concerns. Um, when we get the staff report, draft staff report, uh, sometimes it's so dense, you know? It's heavy paragraphs and in it you have to pick out the comp plan referral, this referral, things within the code. If we could make this work, then this would be highlighting those and a hyperlink to the reference in the comp plan. So we would link, we would click the link and then we'd go to that section of the comp plan. So that, so that the staff is not necessarily, um, bird, typing all of that stuff in.
Right.
Which.
I think that's all great.
Better for us.
So much easier and it moves things along faster. I was just trying to ascertain whether or not we're, we're creating not another document per se, because substantively, are we, are we creating, or that was my question.
Yeah. Uh, the only thing here is that we would be enumerating what our recommendation is and your issues and maybe slash opportunities, you know.
So you.
I, I, you know, the only thing I, I would love to add, which I don't think, I don't know if you want to add, you know, it only really is relevant to a site plan, but you could say, you know, propose, that could be in more of a memo form, but like an exaction, like what are you getting, you know, like your, what are the proposed exactions from us, from, you know? The level of the development usually requires some other maybe benefit to the public. So you may be putting in, you know, a sidewalk connection or, or a street trees or something along those lines, some public improvement to offset your, yeah. No, I mean, you get those, we call them exactions in the site plan realm, in the public benefits and the zone change realm.
Zone change, right, we can't do that with site.
You do them as onsite improvements.
Onsite.
Yeah.
Onsite.
Onsite improvements, the term is exaction in that cases.
Yeah.
What are you exacting out?
Yeah.
That, you know. Like a public plaza. Say somebody builds a shopping center and you're like, I want a little plaza spot with like picnic tables. That's, that's technically called an exaction and that's like a benefit to this, that the development gives you for, and, and all, you know, for whatever, but it's usually got to be, it's not above and beyond and it's not off-site. That's zone change world.
Well, that's New York state law too, right? Now, so how, so you have planning recommendations, that's those are staff recommendations, and then planning board comments? Is that, is that what you're thinking about?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get from you. And it sounds like you'd like a place to put your
Yeah, yeah.
issues or opportunities or comments.
I think it's problematic to use the term recommendations. It can, might fly back at us because someone's going to say, look, the staff recommended this and you didn't listen to them. And, you know, and this comes up in court. Why didn't you follow the recommendations of the staff?
That's what I was trying to say, but it sounds as though we already do that in reports that we do, because I know I've seen staff recommend, I know we recommend, and we rec, I've seen that several times in reports. So that's why I was trying. If, if, if it's just reiterating what we already do.
We do give you recommendations.
We could say it's issues, planning issues. Because when you walk in here with this, we, we don't know the recommendations. You've heard this is staff, but now you have to take input from the board and we have to finalize this box.
Okay, so you would rather recommendations say planning issues? Yeah? And then maybe in the.
Planning board.
Planning board comments.
Just planning issues.
Well, we, we like to think that we're working with the staff back and forth. Staff and the other professionals, they give us the input. We, we tend to, to brace it some and modify it, or sometimes we, we, we have a dialogue in the meeting. That's the purpose of why we're here.
And then there's finding.
And then we capitulate. But we have to go through the process.
And then you put down what you're either.
Okay.
You're hitting the points that you want to talk about.
What word did you use?
Staff identifies the following.
Yeah.
Right.
And then you put in your.
Because the word issues is loaded.
The other big issue is, I think we have to identify and I think it should be instead, we, we have to tell, identify what type of document. We either have to say it's a pre-application report, a pre-submission conference report, because th- those are actually code documents that are reference of the code that we actually officially have to adopt. And sometimes we renew them after modification, so.
You want it up here?
Very rarely just get staff report. We, we have to identify the document that we're, um, whether it's pre-application or.
But it's application type. But it's application type.
Yeah, but it's almost would be better to, to.
Maybe this is just like a cheat sheet.
The title of the document.
I think it's a cheat sheet sound better.
This is more like a cheat sheet and then this is like a cover sheet that goes, but now we're adding, we're going back to, you know.
But is this what we're adopting by resolution?
Do I have to?
No, I mean, we can attach a memo on our letterhead that summarize, this is the summation of this or, and then you adopt this, you know, and this is the summary to this. This is everything that went into.
This is like an index.
But what's the document that we're adopting?
So it could be the memo. We call it a report.
We, we adopt the staff report, the staff report.
But there are a lot of substantive.
By law, you have to adopt a staff report? I wouldn't ask just.
No, it's, it's.
Well, this is a referral sheet, like by law, do they have to adopt a staff report?
I have to see the contest specifically over number three, you don't let it's asked.
It doesn't, but we have been to date for about fifteen years adopting a staff report.
I remember, yeah.
And adopting the pre-submission report and by, the pre-application report.
Pre-application.
As modified by.
And these carry big weight.
As modified by us.
We don't take applications if, if, if one of these reports is, is out of date.
Have you ever questioned this? Why do you adopt these reports? I mean, like, just out of curiosity.
I just thought.
And when they adopt the reports, it's more like them saying that we're acknowledging this is our report. I mean, they're not, like, it's not.
By code, you have to adopt.
Is it Article seventy-eight actionable and they adopt a report, like somebody?
It depends on what stage you're at.
Yeah. I, I think it brings certainty to the application. A lot of important real estate transactions are based on, on report. We don't see them.
No, but pre-submission reports, pre-submission reports and pre-application reports are not a decision.
No.
No.
No, those are investigations.
They're not decisions. They, they're not, they're not, uh, you can't Article seventy-eight them.
No.
No.
Well, let's go back to the beginning. Do you find value in doing something like this?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't want to go any further if it's like, we don't know why we.
So plus, Janice, in the app, application type, right? We have the main ones listed. So let's take, for example, sub, either subdivision or site plan. You, you could, you did talk of putting another box on that that says other, and that other could be, you can identify it as a subdivision, pre-application. That could be a pre-application for checkover. You can, you're not going to have a fixed thing. It's a box that you can add something that says pre-application. The next iteration might be, be pre-submission or, you know, something.
Yeah, I'm almost thinking of color coding them so that you, and then you could easily find which one according is based on it.
But what application type really is includes.
Like the pre's would be a different color than the real one.
The pre-application, pre-application and pre-submission. We have those two that we look at, which is, is an application type, but it's not included here. Any reason why we didn't include it?
But we're laying.
I think we're just trying to lay the groundwork on like, what are we doing and does this make sense? And what else can we add? And how else can we do it? Which is what we're talking about.
We can tweak this again in six months.
We can come back with other samples and be like, okay, we, now we heard you and we think if we did it this way.
But we'll always have access to supplemental documents that support that was written on this.
Of course. This is giving you it at the ready.
Yeah.
Right.
And you'll be able to click a link and pull out the documents.
So in my world, in my line of business, we have something called a, um, pre-funding checklist. This looks like a pre-funding checklist. When you go down, da, 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 da. And if I'm missing something, I go back into all my data, all my files, I go, why is this missing? Is this here? Is this good? Okay, then I can go back.
All digital links, all links.
Sometimes it's paper, sometimes in my, it's, with us, it's actually mostly contractual, so it's on paper.
So it's like a checklist.
It's, and that's, that's what I feel like I'm looking at here, which is, it's a very useful tool.
I mean, I would recommend, let's try using it and see.
Yeah, we tried to like just fill it in here, but I'm looking at it and hearing you, I'm almost like, hmm, like we're missing some stuff, it sounds like.
Well, most important. Go back and look at this, make some more changes based on.
Yeah, but that's, sometimes that can go into the air, you know?
Yeah.
If we come back, we should.
I think use it and see, and we'll figure out what's wrong with it and then fix it some more.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's. And, and I don't mean it negatively. It's just that.
No, let's go back to the drawing board a little bit, because I think that then we should just come back one more time.
Okay.
With.
But you heard what we need, pre, pre-application, pre-submission.
What we heard, you say, pre-submission, pre-application, and then what are you adopting? Because this, you don't feel like is a report.
Yeah.
You know, it feels like a checklist.
Oh, it's going to have.
It's like a checklist report.
It's, I'm, we're going to have everything else.
Remember, yeah. The purpose of these pre-submission, pre-application is to direct the applicant how to prepare, prepare.
Yeah, so what we are talking about is a memo in addition if there's site plan special exceptions or some kind of verbi, you know, something that needs to be said.
Right.
And then all the referrals attached to this, like a little, and that's the full thing that you're adopting, not just this one piece of paper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not just this one piece of paper.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And you need, you need a date on it, so that if you change it.
There needs a date. Definitely a date.
If, if we change it, the later date will mean this was a later version.
And the date could say. It could say December fourteenth draft, and then it could say December fourteenth adopted.
I think Florida is correct, draft, the term draft should be included in the, in the title, whether it's draft, pre-submission, draft, pre-application.
I mean, we can put a watermark on it if it says draft until it's adopted and then, you know, that would be easy.
I think I'm hearing concerns of, you know, possible litigation, right? If someone comes back to us and like, wait, look, all the checkmarks are here.
But again, yes.
This is my approval.
Pre-submissions are not litigation. Staff report is adopted, but it's adopted with a resolution. And so it is the resolution that is adopted first.
Yes.
And the staff report is support for that.
Yeah, so we're not saying we're not going to write anything anymore. You will still write your memos and you'll still read things, but we're just trying to get away from like the twelve pages of stuff.
You mean we don't have to read this?
Yes, you have to read that. But there'll be links and you'll be able to sort of see it at a glance much easier. We're trying to make it easier for you, for us, for everyone involved. And whoever is following along. The public has a hard time following things because they don't understand our process and they also don't understand who, who you had to send it to, what did they say?
True.
How did this go? Why are we doing it like this? Like, it just makes it much more like easy for everyone to follow along.
You follow this process.
Exactly.
So, um, a, a question on SECRE. You know, the checklist, that would be attached?
SECRE.
Impacts, no pain impacts.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
A little.
Well, by the time you're getting this for a site plan, you would have already done that.
Yeah.
And so it would have said, um, type, type one, negative declaration, right? Or type two, that's it. Or unlisted negative declaration. Otherwise, we're, we're doing something different if it's positive declaration.
But that's a good point. You almost want a, in SECRE, cover sheet, right?
Yeah.
See, I see how we can complicate this so quickly.
But the attachment could be.
The attachment.
It still could have the language that, you know, you considered it on this date, this day. This is just the quick one, the quick one.
But we would, but we have the opportunity to review it. I mean, I think, I think the concern that you hear is that the part, that this is just an index, but the planning board participation is just as intense as it has been, right?
Yes, of course.
Yes.
We're trying to make it easier for you to not be like, I didn't get this and I'm waiting on my report for that and, you know.
Or I'm trying to look through the report to see.
I can't find the section that you, you know, was relevant.
What's the big issues, you know?
Yeah.
And you could just go to the issue section.
Like, you got to go through twelve pages before you see that. And so we're trying to make it like, this is an at-a-glance thing that makes it.
This is great. It's going to help us.
Synthesizes the information.
No, I think, I, I think it's helpful.
So what I maybe do, take your comments, and then I'll give you an example of which one, what they would look like.
Yeah.
Pre-application report, uh, site plan report, uh, pre-submission report.
Yeah, let's do a mock-up.
Yeah.
A little bit more than just, we filled this in, in, but.
This morning, at ten AM. So, yeah.
You can do a mock-up so you can see it like how and based on your agenda.
You could be seeing this a, a number of times in one application. First time we'll see it in the pre-submission, then we'll see it in the actual complete a, application.
But I don't have to recreate that.
I know.
Well, I made a different color coded one.
That's great.
Which would be nice. Yeah, yeah, so.
Well, yeah. Okay, so we have a little bit better sense of what you think would be appropriate and we can go back to the drawing board and just make it a little more.
You're taking a great direction.
It's great.
Great, great.
Kudos to you.
Thanks, we're just trying to make this, you know, lots more participatory. What's that?
Is this our holiday present?
Yeah, this is your Christmas gift.
Yes, it's our present.
It should have been red and green.
I give you hope.
We appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to pop it back.
Happy holidays, Janice. Thank you very much.
Okay, you can pass that back down. Craig didn't get it.
Okay.
Bullhead, Craig gets the rest. Here it goes.
From, from Kristen, Christmas cookies. Okay, so we're going to move on to Anthony. Want to take Hampton six?
Yeah, that's actually just an extension until January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
To January eighth?
Yeah, Claire and I are working with Tom, trying to get.
When's our first January meeting?
January.
Eleven.
We just adopted the calendar.
Ah, eight is not on yet.
Oh, sorry.
January eleventh.
Eleven?
January eleventh.
Of the eleven, I'm sorry.
Eleven.
January eleven. Okay, motion.
So you need a motion.
By Dennis, seconded by Gloria in all in favor. Both extensions, six in favor, one absent. Bartlett Tree Expert, Anthony.
So the board might recall, this is the Bartlett Tree, um, landscaping business site on North Sea Road and Sandy Hollow. I have the aerial up here. It's an R twenty zoning district with a pre-existing specialty contractor use. Um, the proposal is to clean up the site a little bit, sort of reformalize the parking a little bit. Um, closing off actually the access onto Sandy Hollow, so that's being closed off completely, so I think that's good. Um, and then the pur, the purpose of this is for the installation of some trailers for the storage of chemicals and such associated with the landscaping business. Um, as you could see from this plan here, um, although there is some more, you know, clearing associated with this project, you can see the buffers are still uh, very well maintained. We have a little expansion of the parking lot back here, um, but we're still maintaining the minimum setback. By and large, um, if you've ever been near the site, um, really nicely screened along North Sea Road. You can't really see much going on in there. And actually even just looking, aside from some of the little, you know, storage area that's encroaching here into what would be a buffer, site's pretty well, pretty well maintained. So like I said, they're trying to install these two trailers, reformalize the parking, some new drainage is going in. Um, the town engineer has reviewed this one. It just only had one comment. And again, then we could sort of move the cars that are sort of sitting over here and down here and put them in the parking lot. This shows the.
Where's the main entrance in?
The main entrance here off of North Sea Road. This one off of Sandy Hollow gets closed off and then this area and around here gets re-vegetated. Um, we did a pre-application on this, uh, but this was a formal application. I handed you the resolution.
So there's circulation around it?
Oh, yeah.
With any, right?
Oh, yeah, this whole thing just, just like that.
Okay, let's go over the.
All right, so first page of the resolution, it's all the standard stuff, the project description. We did a pre-submission conference report for this, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, this is a type-two action under SECR. Uh, we deemed this application complete and we waived the public hearing with a thirty-day written comment period. Uh, no comments were received. We did referrals to the involved agencies. What I put there, there's a typo, no comments received. Application was deemed complete and the terms being compliance with the regulations, deeming it complete. Uh, we got comments from the town engineer, so he's just recommending upgrading flooding covenant to hold the town harmless from any flooding resulting from
From the entire property?
Yeah, that's, you know, that, we've been getting a lot of those. I have it, you'll see in the, the report, I have it graded out for discussion just for the purpose, I just wanna make sure what legal document we're, we're asking for. If it's a covenant, if it's actually a whole harmless affidavit.
Okay.
We got comments from the Office of Fire Prevention who did provide some comments. The pretty standard ones, the ones that require map changes, where they talk about relocating some, some dry wells and demarking the fire lanes, that's been incorporated as the changes. A lot of the other stuff gets addressed during building permit review, but anything that we needed to incorporate, we did there. The page three, the Suffolk County DPW gave us a memo, December eighth, twenty twenty-three. They approved the project and they subject to a highway work permit that's deemed necessary by the county. So when they go to get that building permit, they'll get that referral and get anything required, so we incorporated that. We didn't get any other referral comments, so the next paragraph is to resolve to approve the project for the installation of the chemical trailers, subject to one, changes to the site plan. And I say per the Office of Fire Prevention, and those are the specific site plan changes about the relocation of the dry wells and the fire lane. I indicated, just provide some basic planting lists. It's a small area of re-vedge where they're doing the closing off of the driveway, they'll burn it up, and then behind it, there'll be some landscaping. I just asked them to indicate on this site plan what they're planting. I have no doubt Bartlett Tree Experts could probably plant some nice stuff there.
They could put something nice there.
And then just, uh, uh, correct the limit of disturbance, because there's a portion where it's pointing to some of the prior improvements as opposed to limit of disturbance, so I just wanted it removed from the plan to show it and just clarify where they're doing the additional clearing, which is really up here. And then I have noted dumpster. I don't see a dumpster on the site plan. Am I missing one, Karen?
Uh, no, I, I didn't see a dumpster either.
Okay.
It's used as an office, so I mean, I'll check on that if there's a.
We, so I, so.
Just identify yourself there.
I was like, Karen Pate Murfree, attorney for the applicant Bartlett Trees. Yes, I, I, luckily Anthony gave me the resolution this morning and I wasn't able to check that, but I did see, you know, the original photograph, I didn't, I didn't see any dumpster. And I know it's in the office and they're moving the chemical.
Okay, you're gonna have to speak into these mics if you wanna be on the record.
So the answer is there's no dumpster, is that correct?
Yeah, Karen, Karen Pate Murfree, there's no dumpster.
Does the site plan to show a dumpster?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have that to say to show the, the dumpster on the site.
Meat condition.
Okay.
Screening. Popper screening, uh, because there should be one on the site. Like I said, the site's very well maintained, but there should be one. The general conditions of the approval, again, compliance with the requirements of the Office of Fire Prevention. Uh, we note that the storage of flammable liquids, highly combustible radioactive or explosive materials or hazardous chemicals are subject to all federal, state, and local regulations regarding their storage. Any new HVEAC systems must be screened. Uh, the installation of dusted on lighting fixtures are prohibited. All existing lighting shall be brought into compliance with the town code. No public address systems, future signage should be approved by the planning board. I do note in there, all trucks, equipment, and landscape materials currently stored outside of the designated parking area shall be relocated and stored within the improved area of the site only. So that leaves me known, they could be relocated. Arranging for the pre-construction meeting of the engineer. Pre-submission prior to signature. Uh, that's where the first one talks about the grading. He says requesting a grading flooding covenant holding the town harmless from any flooding. It's just, so it's just a declaration of covenants and restrictions, I'm guessing that would, would state that. So I'll, I'll leave it then as a, as a covenant. Um, and then I'll have to add into the resolution the submission of the covenant and mortgage consent. The next one, engineering fee to be determined, notarized affidavit, and then submission of the final maps for signature. And then prior to a CO, a maintenance bond to landscaping, which we deal with after that's done. I will have to add here then the submission of the draft declaration of covenant and mortgage consent if applicable for the flooding affidavit.
Anthony, the, this.
That's from the engineer.
The storage of the hazardous materials, do we require any proof of compliance with the New York State rates?
The, and when they do the building permit, yes, they have to. That's, that's part of the fire marshal's review of his applications.
They do that.
So they, they'll have very specific signage that has to go on there, you know.
Okay.
safety measures. Uh, so just with those few changes, I think that one's pretty good.
Any questions from the board?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
If you're willing to adopt it.
I'll note it up.
Motion by George, second by Gloria in favor. Oros extension, six in favor, one absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Anthony, certain solar?
Um, we'll let the applicant's representatives come up to speak to the board. So just a reminder for the board here. Uh, this only came in earlier in the week, so Claire and I really didn't have a lot of time to prepare.
Right.
But we wanted, you know, discuss it with the board. This board did a best approval, a small best facility in enterprise zone.
Enterprise zone.
Behind the Southern Credit Credit Union Riverside. And it was a very small battery storage facility, almost like a testing facility. And it had a second phase, a small component with some solar. You know, because that was gonna be part of it. The overwhelming majority of the energy was gonna be taken from the grid and stored, but there was a solar component. The approval was done, the approval was extended. Final maps never came in, though, for signature and stamp. Uh, and moratorium has gone in place for the battery storage facility. And so they can't submit final maps to get them stamped. There's no, you know, guilty permit, you know, that they could apply for unless they go for a exemption from the town board. The applicant came to us, it is my understanding, and I'll have them confirm, that there's some issue with timing because of state funding and all the rest of it. We cannot do anything about the moratorium of the battery storage, so that's off the table. They've requested, though, um, to come in and to modify the previous approval to eliminate the battery storage, at least for the time being, is my guess, um, and then just proceed with a, a solar, uh, which then would give them the ability to do the clearing. The bat window's also coming to a close very soon. So that, that's, you know, sort of how this all came to be. Um, I believe revised plans came in earlier this week. And so I wanted them to have a discussion with the board and see how you felt about doing this modification.
Just so you know, we also talked about the fact that they were willing to say that there would be no vested rights to the battery storage, different fact that came down, that it would not be allowed there, or any of it.
Perfect, perfect. Can I just intercede at this point? Claire, give us the update on the, um, the long-eared bat.
Okay.
That the New Yorks just, so that the board is educated about it.
So Janice went into a meeting with New York State's DEC and it looks like they've become an endangered species. And the designation will then limit clearing permanently for all clearing, basically in the town of Southampton, to be permitted only during that time period.
In that window from December to February, is that it?
Yeah, to the end of February.
So just so we all know, but that's.
So. That's coming now.
So that's good.
It's everywhere.
That's gonna be kind of town-wide, a town-wide description.
Looks like a town-wide, most likely Long Island-wide, but.
Yeah.
Well, I think it is Long Island.
Is that also gonna be the same for residential property? It doesn't apply before us?
That's what I'm hearing, it's everything.
Yes.
The obvious question is, outside of the APOD, you don't need permit to clear.
There will be a permit requirement now, probably when we'll pass legislation that says a building permit clearing requirements.
Before, prior to clear?
Prior to the clearing, it's.
And what about clearing, like, they want to expand their yard?
Same. Same. Anything, between that, that, that time period?
Yeah, at first it's gonna be on the DEC level, obviously, but it's gonna.
No, that time period is the only time you can clear, December through, through.
Yeah, December, February, yeah.
How is that gonna be administered?
Yeah, that's, that's the issue.
It's very difficult demonstration when there's probably two people in the DEC.
You see so many people just.
Hasn't gone after public notice yet?
That's, it's coming, yeah.
I just wanted everybody to know.
Yes, thank you. That's a big change coming through on the town.
So certain solar, so we're looking at a revised site plan that it will be.
This is the plan.
When is this first approved?
Can you give a shooting for the record?
Sure, John Armentown.
John Armentown.
Armentown, we're in twenty twenty-three this year, prior to four twenty. So just, so to clarify, George, the current resolution, although like, like I said, they can't proceed with that resolution, was done, is, is, is up valid till twenty twenty-five, George, so you know.
So we don't have to rescind that or do anything?
No, because we would be doing a modification to the approval.
This is a modification? Okay.
So they'd submit a fee and then they, but they just wanted to initially get your feedback before we did any resolution for you. So yes, it would just allow for the solar and the solar raise, any, any of the.
Can we see the overall enterprise zone where it's located, Anthony? Can you pull that? And is it the same amount of solar that we originally?
Was originally contemplated and that is at a lesser level. It doesn't require a special exception. It would only require a site plan approval from you, which was a party of the previous application, but this would be an amendment to that application to eliminate. As, and as she said, there would be no vested rights, I think, would be.
Is there any built element in this at the moment? Is there anything built in this site at the moment?
No, not this site, but in the surroundings, yes.
Do we have a current one where the, the certain, where lots have been built on?
Yeah, this is in plan.
I think about maybe four or five, George, have been, there, there it is.
So this is the site here. Um, these are all town properties, that's the way they, it's.
It's all twenty-four, I remember that.
Most of these have been, um, been built out. I'm not sure about this one.
So the one in the outline generated.
That's where we did the approval.
And they, and the rest are, that's for the sewage?
One was Davis House Moving Storage.
What was that?
One was, was Davis House Moving Storage.
It was going to be, yeah.
I don't know if that's built yet.
No.
But I'm pretty sure most of these adjacent here are actually town.
Town.
Yeah, I think they were gonna be part of the whole Flanders.
Yeah, that's town development.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are all town.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a fully wooded site now, so declaring, so the subject of clearing.
And, and for the record, their clearing, their permitted clearing was fifty percent from the original site plan, fifty percent, you know, based on the subdivision. And they were proposing thirty-five percent of the time, so it's less than what they're claiming.
So when, when this, would it, would your storage or any store energy, uh, energy, uh, generation or even the storage component, what is, what is that gonna be feeding into, into the grid?
There's a substation, there's an interconnection agreement that my clients already have and they have, their funding is critical on starting a project. We're taking phase two and putting it first. And phase one will be battery storage when that's decided by the state.
Where's the interconnected?
PSEG Long Island, Pat Mound Equipment.
Can you come up? Okay, so this is, my point, the question really is, this is just to generate power, store power, to feed back into the grid, is that, is that the power, you know, proposed building on the site or anything?
No, it's a completely, it's a battery storage site with supplemental solar. The solar is now being phased first and then the battery storage.
And what was the proposed, when it was proposed, what was the capacity of the storage component?
Five megawatts.
Five megawatts, okay.
That's on, that's taken.
I don't know, yeah, I understand, but I just wanted to.
Yep, so we'll feed back to utility when you.
So where is your substation?
Uh, it's the utility substation, so we'll, we'll just have batteries on site that will feed back to PSEG Long Island.
But where is it relative to that? On, on twenty-four, someplace, or? Yeah, the substation.
The batteries.
No, the substation.
I don't, I was looking at the utility mass, but there, there's a feeder directly on Enterprise Zone Drive that's gonna be extended to our site. That's how, you know, that's part of the intervention application with PSE.
So you feed back into.
Correct. It's approved and the, what I would pay is to extend the feeder, tie it in, goes back to the substation, the local community.
Yeah, can we have your names please from PSEG?
Um, Jamal Watkins, Certain Solar.
Oh, you're Certain Solar?
Where, yeah.
I know.
Are you all Certain? You're not PSEG?
No, they're not relative to the site.
PSEG does not, doesn't come to these here.
We can't talk to you about the rate increase.
Sorry. Robert Schertino.
And this project is completely independent, the success, I should say, of this, this, um, application is an independent of the battery storage. In other words, if, if the moratorium finds that we're not gonna proceed with the battery storage, this is still okay.
This can operate and then it'll consider modifying to further supplement the solar.
Council said there are no vested rights, right?
Any of it.
Yeah.
Correct.
But I think you're asking the business proposition, which was my question. You didn't.
Wait, yeah, I don't want you.
Better admit it, you asked it, didn't it, that I was trying to.
Claire, Claire Lotte, I don't know, we're moving away, yeah. And you're not moving.
If you were to look at this, they would, they would, they're asking us to make the application, and we would have documents that would need to be signed that specifically state all that.
Okay.
And then, for example, if it doesn't work, we can have a re-vegetation plan. I mean, we can work something out so that we don't just, yes.
So right now, you're just coming in to get the best part of it taken out, but have the solar panels just the way you originally proposed them and everything is just.
Correct.
Keep it that way.
Phase two is now phase one, correct.
And what do you expect the generated capacity of the solar, of the solar to be?
Uh, twelve kilo, kilowatts each.
That's two, it's a twenty-four.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
It's a small amount.
So twelve kilowatts total?
No, twenty-four.
Twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five total.
Two, two, two sets of arrays, yeah.
Okay, so relatively small.
Okay, all above ground?
Correct.
And so the clearing is an issue? You have to get this cleared?
We're in the bat window, which is the critical component of why we need to proceed with this modification at, at this time, yes.
So what's the mechanism? We have to amend? Are we amending the site plan?
Modifying the site plan. You have to eliminate the vest, um, components and to, and to approve the solar.
And they'll make the application to do that. They haven't done that yet, correct?
Correct, you wanna get the board's key back and then we'll come on.
Yeah.
Oh, then you're gonna come in, but you amended it.
We could do it till January eleventh and then that permission, once it's granted, um, plans are, um, signed, then they can clear. You could give them permission to clear that day too, you know, so they could actually have the clearing permission.
Window for the bats is what, the end of February?
Yeah, yeah, so that's a, in that time, we're gonna talk about six weeks, so, yeah, but clearing doesn't need.
Okay, well, I think we support it. Support solar, yeah.
Okay, good, so we'll fill some of the application and we'll put the resolution for the eleventh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, the hard copy's here. Great, thank you.
Happy holidays.
Claire, you wanna do it, Anna?
Is there an action?
I do.
There's no action on that?
No, no, no action. Here's the latest and greatest pre-submission reports. Here is some plans to share.
I think this clip was good to, to give along history.
Yeah, I wanted to do that, yeah. It's not in the vacuum.
Very well. Did you get one?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, it's lucky, yeah.
I'll let you open it. Um, so I'll start in with the description. So it is a sixteen-bedroom, sixty-five-hundred-square-foot building for employing housing accessory to the existing golf course. Um, somebody's house. And I just wanted to give you some history, that's on page two at the beginning. So that it was subject to the pre-submission and site plan wetlands permits, um, for the same, very similar project. At the time of the decisions, the chief building inspector determined it's accessory to the existing golf course. The neighbor appealed the termination to the zoning board. Appeals. Planning board on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, adopted a site plan wetlands permit. The ZBA made a determination dated June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, that absent a request for a variance or a change to the town code, this board has no, has not authority to determine that an accessory building intended to be used for cooking and or sleeping purposes is permitted. The town board on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, adopted the legislation for three thirty dash one sixty-two point two five, living quarters for golf course employees as a special exception use. And the planning board on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, rescinded the December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, site plan wetlands permit decision. So a new pre-submission, um, conference, uh, application was submitted and a public hearing was held on October twenty-sixth. No public comments were received during the public hearing, but during the thirty-day written comment period, neighbor challenge to the site plan decision is now challenging the enactment of the special exception standards and project is incompatible to this property and this residential neighborhood.
Is that a legal challenge?
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, that's me, sorry.
And then items to be submitted, if they proceed with the application, would be a full site plan application, a special exception petition, full wetlands permits, site, uh, plan, elevations, floor plans, lighting, landscaping, engineering plans, and the long-form EAF. So the project's unlisted action pursuant to SECR, SECR is to be completed prior to deeming the site plan completes. The use, living quarters for golf course employees is now a special exception use in the town code, site code. Review below standards. And I just, just, just for your reference, I think that E definitely needs some additional information because it's saying that the maximum permitted size of any building would not exceed 75, five, sorry, 7,000 square feet, which this doesn't, but it also says a total floor area for, for the aggregate for a golf course should be 14,000 square feet. So we would need the information about the previous, there is additional employee housing on this property. So we would need those facts that you've previously approved in 2000s and so. So we would need that information, so floor plans, what the building is, put, you know, put it on a site plan, that kind of information. So that was the one that, you know, jumped out at me as a standard that, but all the standards will have to be stated by the applicant and responded to in a petition.
Are these new special exception standards devised primarily for?
Golf course living.
Golf course living, okay.
Yeah, golf course employee housing.
And they're in the code, Claire?
They're in the code, under that section, yeah. Excited, I just took it and parsed it out and, and attached it to the end of the report.
Right, but it's 330-162.25?
Yeah, .25.
Yep.
Exactly. So, um, the western corner of the prop, the site is located in New York State archologically sensitive area. They prepared a phase one B and was concluded, no further archaeological investigation required. The applicant is proposing the use of an IA system. So the project appears to meet the setbacks of 325, non-disturbance, non-fertilization buffer shall be established from the wetlands. And this was something that I think you discussed with that previous turf barn that was approved, that there would be a buffer established around the entire ponds. At that point, I think you just established it in that one area, but with this application, the entire pond will have a buffer around it. I'll, I'll specify what that's supposed to be, I think it's 100B, but I'll note it. And the planning board supports the current design. Those are few shed event on the property, it's shown on the plan, to be kept open. And then maybe add additional landscaping buffers and that would be part of the site plan. Street trees added alongside of full road. The trail, at a time of the site plan, there'll be a trails advisory report in the application, so we can include their comments. I think there's been some changes in the location because in the previous application, the town did not own the lands, these two parcels, but I think they do now, as of now. I must check that actually, yep. So these two parcels now, so it's an opportunity, instead of having to go along into the wetlands traverses, there's an opportunity to go through these.
More straight.
Yeah, so now that the town trails is, they'll come back and show, you can have a more direct connection there.
So they've been advised to give us a report?
They have not, they have not seen this yet, but I have.
Not formally.
I have, I have given them a heads up.
Yeah, they know about it, I've spoken to them, but we're going to do the formal referral at the time of set plan, which has been submitted, so we'll probably consider that in January. The appearance of the building is accessible, successful, the board recommends foundation plantings. Information, the general thermal system to be provided, I think they did that, so I think that's on the plans.
I, I don't think, I think the county requires a closed system.
Okay.
I'm not 100% sure, but I think that's the case.
Well, yeah, I think they provided that with their site plan anyways, so, but it's good to, to note it.
Or maybe it's the water authority.
Either the water authority or the county, okay.
Yeah.
I'll note, whoever does, I'll.
Yeah.
Um, so the, I think you supported the land banking, so that should still be part of the application. Of course, we'll do referrals pursuant to the wetlands and site plan review in a public hearing is required because it's special exception in this case. I gave a copy to the applicant yesterday, but that's for your consideration.
Wayne?
Good afternoon, Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Marks, and Susan Bruin, on behalf of the Atlantic Golf Club. We have no specific comments. I, I just want to follow up what Claire was trying to indicate, and we did express this at the hearing. And it's interesting to note the comments we received from the now three neighbors. But as Claire pointed out, the two parcels that were part of the short pond associates subdivision, which was the Held family, who were objectors. The two immediate parcels were purchased by the town as open space. But more importantly, if you go a little further north there, Claire.
Okay.
You'll see two of the other parcels the Held family had, they sold to a builder and they built two houses, which you can see which dwarf, they're, they're almost double the size of what our proposed dwelling will be. And they are there. And then, so the objectors are no longer the Held family, they don't have an interest in any of the surrounding properties. But the objectors are Marianne Gabriel, which is the one parcel immediately adjacent to us. And one of the changes also was, and, and when we originally proposed a plan, there was a line of evergreen trees proposed on our site plan, and that was actually installed physically out there now. And, and we advised the board that if more is needed, we're willing to do that. But that, that was a change in the physical conditions. The other objectors, interestingly, are, if you look to the north of the two dwellings, that one vacant lot and then the next house are the two other objectors.
Up there?
Yeah, so they're, they're, they're very much removed from this and now separated by houses that are like their own or, or otherwise. And all of those properties, interestingly, unlike Atlantic's property, they all put these giant evergreens along the entire frontage. So the view shed along there, none of that has been maintained. But I just wanted the board to understand how and where and what the objections are coming from. We did see the letter from Mr. Matthews as we thought there more, might be more expression of what concerns their clients actually have, what harm will result from this project to their clients. And of course, that letter didn't provide or any, any further insight, just a major objection. So unsupported, but we'll proceed, the report is standard. You do have since September, a full final application, special exception petition. We showed in, in the full expanded environmental assessment form. So I think we'll work with Claire to make sure everything's complete so that you can address the final application as soon as possible.
Yeah, the other thing, I think, I think we would need those floor plans for the existing.
Yeah, I think you're reading that section wrong. It's the new buildings, the aggregate, and we participated in the hearings. And I think you should discuss with Katie Garvin. It says in the aggregate, but it's, it's, it's related to the new buildings couldn't exceed, you couldn't put more buildings, so. Cause every golf course would never be able to expand because they all exceed that now.
So the word is aggregate?
I still think we would need it, I think it's a planning.
Well, you have them. You have files, they were all approved by this board, so you have.
What year, what year was that, William, do you remember?
The years? Three times this board approved site plans for the expansion and affordable housing, yeah. They were existing barns that were converted.
In the eighties or nineties or just, just an idea?
2000, yeah.
I mean, we have, we have proposed.
We put, in, in, in our report, I indicated the history and when the dates of those approvals, so.
And the square footages.
Uh, we can go back and pull your files and see what the square footages are.
Well, that would be proposed, I'm saying.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can go back and pull your files to see.
Right, so we proposed, I was going to make it up, proposed 3,000 square feet. When you build, you know, you come up with 29, 50 or, or 3,000.
Yeah, they were all existing, they were all existing buildings that were converted from.
And then no additions put up.
There were no additions put on those buildings. Except for, I'm, sorry, there was a dormer put on the one building to get light and access. And that was also subject to zoning board grant for pyramid relief because the building's located about two feet from the property line.
Okay, so.
Okay, so we can get that in.
That makes sense.
Good. No other questions?
No.
Good.
Thanks.
Okay, Claire?
Yes, for your consideration.
So, any other questions on that? We can adopt the, the report, the draft report? Motion by Dennis, second by Craig, all in favor, close abstentions. Six in favor, one absent. Southampton dog, Claire?
Yes.
Who just said that is an example.
They didn't know they were going to be used as an example, I know. So we have a pre-submission and then for your consideration, we also get the application submitted to our office for the next phase, they're anxious to get this up and running for the summer.
Absolutely.
So if you'd like, if the pre-submission does get adopted, I think we consider this for completeness too. So just that in your back of your mind. Have an extra. So this is, right now, the building is green, they're not doing any changes to the building, but they do want as a phase two to maybe eventually turn it to like a barn red that will do a referral to the ARB at the time the site plan's done. And then this is just the, as built, but there is a site plan, shows a small dog area in the front of the corner and then in the back of the building. So that is their proposal. I think I have.
I only have like, I have a couple of copies of this, but this is a good example, if you don't want me passing it down. It shows the two areas for the dogs.
So that was my one issue, Claire.
Okay.
The outdoor dog area in the front, right on the corner of County Road 39.
Do you want the applicants up there?
Yeah, if you want to come, come.
You can just identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Matthew Jurofski.
Veronica Krasbaska. Oh, and you've got a puppy.
All right, that's not fair.
Last time you said we didn't bring one and you were sad and complaining, so.
All right, approved, let's go. Whatever you want.
This is Kipa, she's 13 years old, we just bought her 14 months ago.
Very sweet, yes.
I'm not adopting a third.
We had this one for over a year, we're keeping her.
We're keeping her. So my one issue was this area in the front.
Yes.
Where you want some outdoor space for dog exercise or whatever.
Right.
It's a, it's a very exposed area. It's on County Road 39, endless ceaseless traffic. Lots of emission fumes, I don't think it's an appropriate place. So if you can absorb what you want to do here, somewhere in the back, I think this would be a much improved site plan.
And if I may expand on that, I see it as potential hazard to drivers, only because it, you know, you see dogs playing out there. Oh, look at the dog, the light turns, you, someone beeps, you hit your gas, you know, it could distract drivers. So I agree with Chair.
So do, um, so what they could do at this time, because right now the project informs the code, but they have to meet a 50-foot setback in the rear, which is just to, and actually, let me pull it up. It's to that LIPA property.
Oh, yeah.
And again, by industrial, no neighbors, that is really for like neighbor setbacks, right?
Right.
Um, they have to go to the zoning board of appeals, but they're, they wanted to ask you if you were supportive of that, to make that area in the bigger, that bigger.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And they don't need so much parking, so they can take apart that parking lot.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll prove, you know, we'll proceed with them so that the use started. We could have a small area in the back, but if they go to the zoning board of appeals, they can, you know.
Yeah, and then you can plant that and, you know, that make our front area nice.
Right.
That was our first thought, but then we were told that we have to, you know, in the back, we have to like keep that 50 feet.
Yeah, the 15, you can make a bigger one, longer for now. But if you want to take some of the area up, maybe supportive to about 30 feet or something setback, something to that. But see how it plans out and then.
Yeah.
Bring it back to you, okay, as we go through the process.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so yeah, it's a 9,000 square foot building, 2,000 of the building is going to be some, for some offices on the east side. And the remainder of the 7,000 and change is going to be for the, the kenneling for the dogs inside. And then just have that small, that smaller area in the back for the dogs.
Here's the.
They'll show it on the site plan.
Oh, you're in, sorry.
It's a type two action, the use is under veterinarian veterinary service and kennels. So it's a kennel use that they're proposing. And so they proposed a reuse of the building. And then I'm going to talk about the small area, the dogs be relocated to the, to this house. So if you could just provide plans prior to the meeting, to the hearing, which I think in this case, we probably have for February 8th. Does that make sense?
Did she smile?
She's completely toothless, sorry, I don't know if it was.
No teeth.
Yeah.
The play area, whatever for the dogs, should be in the back.
It should literally be in the back, we'll have, we'll have a new plan for the hearing, so they can amend it.
Yeah, good, makes sense.
Right.
Yeah, that sounds good. Um, hearing civilians fine, it's existing, but they want to trade it to the barn red, which might look good.
Sure, I think it's, that's attractive.
Yeah. And so I just went through the parking, they generate 19, but they have 40, so they have plenty of parking on the property. I would just suggest that they re-stripe it, it's been faded over the years and have the handicap spaces. But that's something we can have during the site plan.
And there's a lot of nice old shrubbery along the front that is going to stay, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Touching any.
Yeah, it's a little overgrown in places, but still just clean it up a little bit. Yeah, it's a good, it's a good landscape site, so. Yeah, so I'm recommending adopting reports as one action and then we'll just do the completeness as the second action.
Okay, so motion to adopt?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Dennis, all in favor.
Aye.
Six in favor, one absent, and then complete and scheduled public hearing?
Yeah, so we're looking at February 8th.
Okay, so a motion to deem it complete and schedule a public hearing for.
Thank you so much. Oh, no, 11.
Oh, I think it's January 11th or February 8th.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
February 8th, motion by Craig, second by Gloria, all in favor. Close abstentions, six in favor, one absent.
I'm just going to say. Thanks for bringing the puppy.
To the hearing.
I was going to say in that resolution about the submitting the plans for the new area in the back, the play area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know what's going to happen, old lawyer is going to start showing up with a puppy, like, here's my application and look at my puppy.
Thank you, happy holiday.
That's so great.
Claire, you did the dog, we can't come to Barnes and Noble sign.
Yeah, so this is pretty standard, um, so Barnes and Noble is open, of course. And it's a site that I think was collapsed for a hot minute and now it's Barnes and Noble. But it's a, it's a gray, gray and yellow sign, very standard looking.
I was there yesterday, not to, to King Holland, but.
So that's the proposal, here's another, you know, the.
The signage and the comments is really beginning to look great.
Good.
Good ticket.
And they've got signs and directions, they don't have enough carts, things.
Yeah. So I have a, well, actually, I printed a resolution, but to recommend approval based upon the plans.
Are those letters the right size?
It seems, it seems large.
They seem large.
Well, um, there's a picture in there and that is the picture of the, what they've installed already.
Well, I don't care, you know, I mean.
The ARB approved it, it does meet the requirements for the side.
It does, it looks very large.
Yeah.
Do we have, did they submit to us? This is their submission?
This is their submission, yep.
That's not right.
Yeah, I mean, I have to say it's, it's so, it's so big and spread out.
Someone here?
By Zoom?
Yeah, is there someone here on Zoom?
Would this be McCullough?
No, but the sign person.
Sorry. Do they give us anything there? Do they give us anything there?
Okay, Stevens for the, my other one. Um. It doesn't have the dimensions?
Three-inch faded metal letters.
No.
Three-inch deep, eight-inch return. Doesn't give us an overall size at all. Here, you take a look.
And there's five pages there, but I don't know, does any one of them have?
I have one of them.
And here's two.
No, this is, um, David's. No, this isn't mine.
So, I'm seeing one, two.
I have three, four, five.
And that doesn't have the dimensions on that, right?
Looks bigger than the Petco in the back.
The overall dimension. Twenty-six.
Twenty-six feet by?
Two, two, by twenty-one inches.
By twenty-one inches. I don't, I don't know that that composite for master, master, uh, sign code. If there's some way we can pull that up?
Oh, I can. Okay.
Yeah, right.
Twenty-six feet.
Twenty-six, twenty-six feet. Point two and a half inches and then a twenty-one inches height.
This is the overall square footage, which is this length by this length.
I mean, it's, it's as, it's as big as the buil- It's as long as the building.
Yeah.
And this seems out of character.
There's a, there's a maximum size here, so if they're not in compliance with it.
You're in a parking lot, you're not driving by it at forty miles an hour, you know.
It's a little smaller, it'd be easier to read.
Yeah.
Okay, so the approved master sign plan.
Size and size.
Store front's under permitted at eight foot, under forty feet, so it's bigger. Or over should be permitted twelve foot or eight-foot wide sign plaque at the election of the tenant, so twelve feet. So, this is twenty-one, right?
Twenty-six, twenty-six.
Twenty-six feet. Good memory. This is less than eight, okay, sorry, greater than, I'm sorry.
What's the, what's the size of the store?
This is a bigger store. This is the one, so under eight thousand square feet, had to do the green and gold, remember that?
Okay, right.
So, above that, um, it just says signing, consistent with the detail of the master sign design packet, which complied with some regulations.
Sign dimensions.
Here we go. Total area of any one or more wall sizes, including any awning sign, shall exceed one and a half square feet for each horizontal foot of wall on which they have mounted. Uh, shall exceed seventy-five percent of the width of such a wall. So, this is not, no, this is a wall sign.
As we calculate it.
Sign dimensions, here's another one, what's that?
Well, this has to be over the, over the eight thousand square feet, so keep going. They have under and over. I think we need the over eight thousand square feet.
No, it just says, uh, just approved by the planning board and architectural review board. Does not give the limitation of the sign's size.
Well, I think it's totally inappropriate for them to put up a sign and not have planning board approval, after all the work that we've put into for a master sign plan for the commons, to do that. It really, you can convey that to them.
That's the landlord, that's Kim Cullen.
Yeah.
Yep.
They may have messed up.
They're coming back, it's too long, is that what you're saying?
Sign is, it violates the sign code.
Oh, I don't think it does. Um, Marjorie did look at this prior to, um, but I don't, if you think that scale-wise, it's too big for that portion, then it's, that's something.
It looks ridiculous, in my opinion.
Okay. And you see, you didn't see, notice the sign when you were there itself, right?
Oh, I saw the sign, because the, I was parked facing Barnes and Noble when I went into King Cullen yesterday.
Okay.
So, it was, it was like.
You know, this mistake was made once with Petco in Hampton Bays, where the Petco sign was gigantic, which really dwarfed the other signs. So, I don't know what we do about it, but we should do something about it.
I can relate this back to the applicant, they should appear at the January eleventh.
Yeah.
Um, but what I'm hearing from the board is it's out of scale. Okay.
Did they get a permit?
We'll double check it.
Did they get a signed permit for this yet?
Not yet.
Yeah.
But it's up.
It's up.
See, that's.
Could you refer that to code enforcement?
As well.
Yeah, it should be cited.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll do that and then I'll appear back before you. Okay. And then I'll relay. And I'll have it double-checked that the sign, it meets the code at least.
Do you need this, Claire?
Thomas and Julie Crowley, Anthony, you want to do that one? Did you sign the sign plan for it? Did you sign those tables, Bill? The sign plans are both off the agenda? Number twenty-seven?
Yeah, all, all tables is off.
And the clock, mobile.
And the clock.
Is, is on extension.
So, number twenty-seven is off.
And we've got it on as an extension.
Okay, and we've done the planning discussion. We've done twenty-eight.
That's not mine.
All right, so the next one is Julie. Thomas and Julie Crowley, um, this is a very simple subdivision. This is a two-lot subdivision. This is on Canal Street, um, in Hampton Bays. It's R-15 zone. If you look at the aerial here, you could see, um, all the lots. This, this was previously two lots.
Yeah, it looked like a merger.
So, they've looked to recreate it, because it wasn't a subdivision map that was approved by the planning board post nineteen fifty-seven, they had to go back to the zoning board and then do all that, uh, which they've been successful. It's not in any overlays, except the, um, agricultural, I mean, the archaeological, which they did. Um, no wetlands or anything like that. So, it's pretty, pretty straightforward there, um, just putting it right down the middle. There's an existing residence, uh, and then a proposed residence to the north. Uh, so I have a resolution for the board. Um, this, you know, if you look.
Is there any vegetation in there?
There's no vegetation. Uh, there's very little vegetation on the lots in general, some of them have, but you can see it's pretty bare over here.
Is that because the soil is very sandy or?
It could be, um, you know, who, who knows?
It's obviously not in the APod.
It also's.
But it's not in APod and not in the wetlands.
They're small lots, the people are just probably clear.
And sort of just clear them. Um, so if you look at your resolution on page one, again, it's, uh, it's a twenty-two thousand square foot lot, R-15, so they had to go to the zoning board. Obviously, the zoning at the time, subdivision was done, was, was different, it was consistent. Um, they were successful, um, they got health department approval, the zoning board relief. Uh, this goes back, we did the pre-app report on this in twenty nineteen, uh, in COVID, uh, and then having to deal with the health department and zoning, so it took a little longer. That's okay. We recommend, we deem the application, uh, complete in November, and we waived the final hearing with a thirty-day written comment period, mostly because there were two hearings on this already here and at the zoning board of appeals. Bottom of the page, uh, is the planning board findings. Uh, number one, county department of health services approved the proposed subdivision August twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, with a note with the new IA, uh, innovative alternative sound spray systems and public water. Uh, the pre-app report for this was adopted in twenty nineteen, and the plan is consistent with that. Uh, it's a type-two action under CEPR. It is archaeology, archaeological sensitive area, and, uh, Trapper did a, uh, report dated February twenty twenty-two. Uh, the final hearing was waived with a thirty-day written comment period, no comments were received. Um, and this will be subject to a flat park fee of twenty-five hundred dollars. So, the next part is the referrals, engineer provided comments. Standard comments, a three-inch rainfall. Um, they talked about, uh, requiring the covenant noting that proposed lot two will be subject to road review. That's perfectly fine. There was, again, stockade fence relocation. And the encroachment that he notes, there's a small, um, concrete patio encroachment along the north property line here from the adjacent property. I have it grayed out in the resolution, um, I, it, you know, it looks like it's been there for a gizillion years. I don't know if the board has any role in dealing with this.
The encroachment.
The encroachment. I tend to think not, but, um, we dealt with this on the zoning board recently. Um, there was an agreement between the two parties, so we'll get to that. There's the map again. Comments from the office of fire prevention, it's served by public water and fire hydrants, no issues there. Uh, conservation board, uh, noted, uh, the existing clearing. They noticed the IA systems and that's sufficient as mitigation for any wetlands impacts, although nearby wetlands, not wetlands within jurisdiction of the town. Um, the trails advisory stated they had no trail implications. So, the resolve is to approve the subdivision map, it was prepared by Nate Corwin III, subject to the following map changes, uh, the postal delivery house numbers for each lot. Um, the removal of the proposed structures, you can't file the maps like that. Per the town engineer, um, as may be applicable, there might be something on there, um, that you would have to fix. Adding a notation to the map regarding declarations of covenants and restrictions. Uh, adding a notation to the map regarding compliance with the zoning code, except as modified by the zoning board of appeals, and they put the date of the approval there. Uh, two, there's, I, I just note the encroachment. Christine, if I may, um, what's your thoughts? There's a very small encroachment coming from an adjacent property onto here. It doesn't impact the building envelope, and it's just noted by Tom, the engineer noted it, and I don't know what. However they resolve it. It could be an agreement between two parties, okay? So, but.
Kevin Springer, Dynamic Legal, one oh-four C, Squire Town Road, Hampton Bays. I have already taken up talks with the neighbor, and we will either come up with an agreement or they will move, I think it's one point three feet of it, which is, that's the amount of the encroachment, maybe even a little bit more, because they don't want to have any issues down the road if they decide to sell or do an addition of some sort either. So, there, they, they know it's there, there's, there's, it's all amicable, and one way or another, we're going to figure it out.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Next is the payment of the park fee, twenty-five hundred dollars, the flat fee. Declaration of covenants and restrictions, these are all standard in this case, no further subdivision, no lot line change, zoning board approval. Again, all new utilities and new utility poles, um, to be installed on the ground, that's applicable. Uh, three-inch drainage for all future impervious surfaces. Lot two would be subject to road review process, um, under Town Law two eighty-eight. Uh, and then it's the town attorney approval of the legal documents, town board acceptance. Nope, there's no scenic easement here, take that out, number seven's out. Uh, so then it's just submission of the MyLars and paper prints, uh, for signature, and then to be filed within sixty-two days.
Any, any questions? Comments? Okay, motion to accept by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent. Teresa. Sixteen Indian Avenue LLC.
Hi, good afternoon. This is just a referral from the zoning board of appeals. I have a copy here of the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, report that the, uh, board adopted, the pre-application report, which identified the needed variances, specifically road frontage from Coolidge Avenue, and I can pull that up for you once. So, this is, uh, the subdivision, they're proposing to, um, divide the lot here, with the second lot taking, uh, frontage from Coolidge. They do require a road frontage variance, because there is insufficient road frontage there. I have here again, a copy of the report, would you like to have it? So, the resolution before you is just to refer a copy of the report, which identifies the needed variances, without, um, providing a recommendation one way or the other on whether or not they should be granted, uh, to the zoning board of appeals.
Can I, um?
Yeah, does Teresa, do you want to make, do you want to go over this at all before Wayne speaks?
Well, this, this report was adopted by.
Let me adopt it.
You had already adopted that report in September. And it's just to refer that to the zoning board of appeals, without making a recommendation one way or the other.
Wayne.
So, Wayne Grillen of Shea Marczyk, going for the applicant. With all due respect, Teresa, I think maybe Anthony can provide some clarification. Simultaneous with this application, we did make application with the zoning board for the two requested variances. And when this board in September adopted the report, we did provide the zoning board with a copy of that report. And at the hearing, um, one of the comments, they had also received the conservation board, uh, report, which you, if you recall, uh, suggested that there was illegal clearing on this property and so on. We had that discussion with, at this board. After this board's discussion on that, and at the time of the zoning board, I had, uh, discussed this with my client, and I said that, uh, the discussion we had is that this board may want us to consider providing some sort of buffer along the westerly property line. And the, the zoning, we, again, I suggested that would be a consideration that the zoning board could, uh, entertain as well. They actually asked us to go back and, uh, provide them with a plan, which we did, uh, a week or so ago, actually, November fifteenth or thereabouts. And, or actually, December fourth, the landscape plan. And my recollection was that the zoning board wanted the planning board's input on that landscape plan. So, they didn't ask, they, they already had the, the, the pre-app report, so.
Do we have it?
I haven't got it yet, but I think it's sort of bizarre. All this is about is Candace did her referral of this variance application to the planning board. Planning board normally adopts a pre-app report, and a lot of times, we say in there, this shall serve as comments. We didn't do that in this case. So, all that we want to do is refer the comments to the zoning board of appeals. I will handle the, that with the zoning board of appeals. I, I don't want the planning board to review and approve this now. That doesn't make any sense. Just let's refer the thing there and I'll deal with the zoning board.
We adopted this, and now what we're doing is referring it, using it as a referral.
And what I tried to express to the zoning board, that is, that we would submit something with the final application, and you would review. And you would provide your review and comments to that at that time. So, it was sort of premature, but nonetheless, that was what I thought was happening, but I'll go wherever Anthony.
So, do we, do we do a resolution, send this, formally send it?
We've got to wait for it, only because we usually say in that this shall serve as comments to the ZBA, but we do get a, we've always historically gotten referrals from the ZBA and done a resolution. At this case, we didn't preemptively address it, but that was the only.
So, do you need a separate resolution now?
You could do one now, yeah.
Well, let's do it.
Well, I drafted one, it's in your packet.
Oh. I do.
It's just saying that this, this serves as the comments to the planning.
Where is that?
At zoning board.
Teresa.
Uh, it should be in the packet.
Oh, so they don't have a packet?
We don't have a packet.
Oh, we don't have a packet.
Provide it separately.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't do that.
In the process of our new format.
The old format.
The old format.
I'm sorry, um.
And that's what it says.
So, it's one shape.
Yeah, it's a very simple resolution.
And it just, it states the date of the, of the resol, of the adopted report, and just saying that we're referring it as, as our.
This shall serve, this report shall serve as our official, uh, referral.
Yes, correct.
Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Six in favor, one absent. Six in favor, one absent. Thank you.
I'm going to ask if I can just, so I can prepare for.
Tonight? Yeah, sure.
If I can finish my stuff.
Okay. George Hastings?
George Hastings is a three-lot subdivision, Old Riverhead Road and Hastings Lane in Hampton Bays. We did an approval for this already, an existing house, and then one lot in the back and another lot along the road here. They've been meeting the conditions of the approval. One of them was previously, Tom mentioned SWIP. Whatever the engineer says, we incorporate. They had discussions with Tom. We got a subsequent memo from Tom after we did the approval, eliminating the requirement for the SWIP. Based on the clearing that was contemplated for this, if you're under an acre, you're not subject to it. So I, you know, we had it in our approval, you know, just as Tom outlined it. SWIP, SWIP, SWIP.
So we're, so we're un-swipping.
So we're un-swipping?
So, you know, that's what this resolution is basically.
Un-swip.
To un-swip.
It's a new word.
Right.
We make up one here.
Be that good, Gloria. It's, it's one of my joys in life to create new words.
We're un-swipping, according to Gloria. Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, so if you just go to the second page of the resolution, it's resolved, and it's amended the final conditional approval as follows. So this eliminate the SWIP requirement in conditions number two and three. It eliminates conditions number six and seven altogether. It eliminates the SWIP and Speedy's covenant requirement, but we're adding a covenant that puts all future property owners on notice regarding flooding. That's what Tom suggested. So that's really what the resolution is. We're eliminating all references to the SWIP as required and including a new covenant, and then all other conditions of approval would remain the same.
So we're adding a covenant.
We're adding a covenant.
Wayne, is this you?
Yes. And I appreciate your patience, the number of years that this has gone through. Interestingly, if you have two seconds, and I know you're busy, but two things happened. One, as a typical covenant, and this has a series of covenants that deal with stormwater runoff and the appropriate dry wells and everything else, and there will be this additional one that the town engineers require, and will already prepared, revised covenants and everything for the town attorneys. This is the last thing. But interestingly, about two years ago, when we had prepared those covenants and we got the title certification, the clients had a mortgage on the property, and you require the mortgagees' consent. We sent it out, and I found myself trying to explain why this board's requirement for a common driveway and the other covenants that you had are something that the bank should accept, and they frankly weren't going to accept them. One of the other things, they said, no, we, these people were in Louisiana, well, we, there should be separate driveways for every lot. So what happened, though, is in the interim, my client paid off the mortgage to get away from them, so we're, we're good now.
Good.
But that's part of the delay. But the other part was the town engineer and Mr. Borowski discussing the SWIP requirement, so thank you for your.
So the motto was not to get a mortgage from Louisiana.
How did you get the mortgage?
They sell them right over and over again.
It was with Chase Bank, but you end up with somebody.
A service, exactly.
Yeah. Okay, so Anthony, so.
So I recommend approval of the resolution as amended.
So motion? Motion by Gloria?
Say.
Second by Cravel, in favor. Opposed, extension six in favor, one absent. Rothman Dynasty, Anthony.
I'll put it on, and I only have a couple left here.
And you just have extensions, right?
No, well, I have a direct resolution. I'm still waiting on my 239 referral. I got a little backlog, and I messed it up, but I did want to get this direct resolution reviewed. This is the planning board. You might recall, I took this over for Jackie. Rothman Dynasty, this is a two-lot subdivision, well, technically it's a three-lot subdivision, two residential lots, one existing house, and then a open space parcel, I believe, is proposed to be dedicated to the town. Let me show you the map. So you'll see the, one lot down here encompassing the existing residence, a second lot over here. These improvements will come off the final map. And then all the open space and wetlands to the north as a separate property. You'll see all the area of wetlands, and including the existing conservation easement, are incorporated into the proposed open space. That easement would probably not be relevant anymore, is my guessing. It was established, I think, probably, well, whenever it was established. But also as part of this plan, we have wetland setbacks that are shown to affect each property based on the recommendations of the Conservation Board. Each of these lots will also have a covenanted naturally vegetated, non-disturbish, non-fertilization buffer, I believe extending, I believe it's 100 feet from the wetlands. Yeah, well, it's extending 100 feet from the wetlands on the new proposed lot, and then it's sort of, it's varying with the whole length. So it includes a non-disturbish, non-fertilization buffer from the wetlands. It includes the appropriate setbacks for structures and sanitary system, all of which are shown on the map here, so they comply with all the wetland setbacks. It also includes a common driveway that's going to serve both lots. This is lot two. Lot two also shows an access off of Seven Ponds Toward Road, which this board could discuss. We'll go through that, although, I mean, I'll, I'll get to the resolution, but as it relates to that, that was, you know, a discussion that the board had. Frankly, I have no idea why you got accesses there. If you look at the aerial, you know, the access is somewhere down here. You know, this is a drainage area, there's a culvert, there's all sorts of things going on. At the time discussion was raised, Alex Greger, I believe it was Alex Greger, his initial memo said, under no circumstances is this going to happen, no way, no how, in not so many words, but I mean, that's what it said. And then through discussions, you know, do this, engineer it this way, engineer it that way. We got the final application in, I did my final referrals. I referred it. Charles McCartell is the superintendent now. He came back, really only made a recommendation to change, it was a map change on one of the sheets, and beyond that, you know, he didn't make any other further recommendations. I left it noted in here, because I think some board members did have questions about the need for that second access, particularly.
It's necessary.
What's that?
It's necessary.
You think it's necessary? Okay.
Why, why would you say it's necessary?
In the afternoon, the traffic backs up to the stop sign way, way back. You can't get out of that driveway.
You mean over here on Lower Seven Ponds?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I live five minutes from there.
All those roads just become gridlock.
Yeah, I travel through. Like I said, I just, I put it in there for discussion purposes, and if it's not an issue, there's not.
Well, there's a way, I mean, does the plan of the second access show the culverts?
Yeah, it was part of, the, the, the whole thing had to be designed to address any changes that were needed in property. So, yeah, 100%.
As long as they can keep the water moving through that swell, it's not an issue, and it's, it's a benefit for the traffic. As much, you can take, you know, traffic off that intersection, it's a plus. You know, if you're going north, why go down to that horrible intersection? Just take the second exit.
Do you still want, well, we'll get to it. Do you still want a common driveway then serving both lots?
Well, yeah, I mean, you don't want separate driveways.
So one of the two lots would have two ways to get out, and the other lot would just have.
The other one just runs on Lower Seven Ponds, yeah.
So the construction of that driveway then has to, has to comply with engineering, right? And have we had Tom to take a look at this, or he's?
Tom, well, I'll get to it. You'll see what Tom had said in there. So, we'll go through our resolution here, because I did all the referrals, you know, we got the final application. Like I said, I'm still, it was my mess-up. I'll be the first to say when I mess up, taking on all these projects, so I'm still waiting on my, my referral from Marty. But I did put what I believe would be the correct wetland setbacks and provisions in here, so. So the first page of the resolution is pretty standard project description when we adopted the pre-app report. It was extended. Just so you see, I reference here, you might, oh, by way of history, this property was part of a previous subdivision.
Yeah.
And so you had to do a covenant amendment on this one. So the few whereas's in there, I have the wrong dates and map number, so I'm going to fix those in there for the previous subdivision. This was a type-one action under secret, because it's also in the Ag Overley District, and we did a coordinated review, and then in April, this board established itself as lead agency and issued a net deck. We deemed the final application complete and scheduled a hearing, which was held in May. And then we have the findings. Here, I just graded out only because I had to put in the actual date and the live room page number for the CNRs for the Health Department, which I do have. So the Health Department approved the project with their covenants and restrictions. Two, the pre-app report was approved in 2021 and subsequently extended to January of this year. Again, type-one action under secret, and a negative declaration was issued in April. New York State Archaeological Sensitivity Area, and we got an archaeological report, but it's not from Tracker Archaeology, it is from Joanne McLean, Inc. That's out of Sag Harbor. This is lady that's doing that there now, so. We had a final hearing in May. It was closer to the 10-day written comment period, and we had some comments, the nature of the wetlands, the easement, the impacts on wetlands, impacts on stormwater, and again, additional density in lots. These are pretty standard comments we received. Six is the park fee, which will be a flat fee of $2,500. Seven, we're not subject to the Long Island workforce housing. It's only two lots. We note that a single common driveway, it should just say a common driveway easement will serve lots two and one and two. The utilities are going to go directly to the lots outside of that. And 10, just notes, the planning board notes the environmental sensitivity of the property. It is, you know, got four, over four acres of wetlands, but all the wetlands are going to be incorporated into the open space, and I believe dedicated to the town. Is that the plan, or?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's that. The town engineer provided comments. He says the proposed common driveway is encompassed within the 30-foot common. All driveways shown on the plan outside of the easements that are not part of the common driveway shall be removed from the plan. That's pretty standard. The proposed apron on Seven Ponds Town Road, completely piped and headwalled in swell, shall be reviewed directly by the Highway Department as part of the road opening permit for that lot. So to that point, like I said, we referred it back to the Highway Department, and McCartell came back just with the one change that he wanted on the one sheet. So I guess to that point, the applicant went back and had the proper engineering plans done that was requested on the prior highway.
But what about engineering? You know, a referral to engineering?
We did it. That's what we're looking at, his comments. He just, in that, as it related to that particular, he, he punted it sort of to the Highway Department.
He's reviewing the common driveway, but not the separate action.
Yeah, he's the separate entrance, he said would be such a highway work permit, and I would, you know, defer to the, to the Highway Department. And, and in all fairness, that's what we did the first time around, is that we discussed this with Alex Greger's office, who had, you know, more skin in the game than he has yet. And then he has his engineering fees, the typical three-inch rainfall, and then the Speedy's covenant, all of which has been incorporated. He's not recommending engineering approval. That will come as part of the final process. We'd have to get the final map stand by the engineer. Conservation Board came back with comments. They talk about the, obviously, the nature of the wetlands and the ecological importance of, of the wetlands in and around Mill Pond and Meacock Bay. The 239 referral, which is still pending, but that's accurate. They recommend non-disturbish buffers on lots one and two, which we do in fact have. The subdivision needs to redesign to relocate the proposed driveway for lot two to Lower Seven Ponds Road. I guess we've had that discussion. We're going to have a common driveway on Lower Seven Ponds, and then that second access of the board declined on, onto the other road. They always recommend, it's been conservation easement, the proposed open, we're getting an open space parcel here, as opposed to conservation easements. Recommending a native revegetation plan for the areas that are disturbed within the proposed open space area, which I have highlighted here. And then existing fence needs to be removed from the proposed open space parcel along Seven Ponds Town Road. I believe you mentioned that actually, too. I haven't been out there a second time, so I have to check, but I put it as a condition.
Yeah.
The Office of Fire Prevention said that the site is served by public water and hydrants. I only, I only grade that out is because I didn't have a Word document to actually copy and paste in there, so. But they, this area is served by hydrants, didn't have any recommendations. Suffolk County Department of Planning said this is a matter for local determination. And then we got that little memo from the South Hampton Highway Superintendent, I just got to put in the date. He references a change to sheet, I believe it was by T1, a very minor change, and that was his only recommendation. Trails Advisory had no trail implications, which is because of the open space dedication. They had comments previously, but we're getting this place dedicated to the town, so they, they will limit those. We did get comments from the Planning Commission. We didn't get anything from CAC, the Fire District, or the Health Department. That's not uncommon. So the next resolve is to approve the map with certain map changes per the town engineer. Again, some discussion, I didn't know if I saw it on the disturbed areas in the open space to be revegetated. What do you know, do you know anything about what's happening on there that? I'm asking because it's been a long time since the subdivision's been done, so if the area is coming back naturally, you'll.
I haven't, Daphne Vaughn serves at Environmental Planning for the Rothmans. I haven't been to the site in some time. I believe they were maintaining the edge of the clearing. All of the portions that would be cleared are on lot one, the existing developed lot. I would imagine that we could probably solve this with some minimal planting and then letting it kind of come back. Some of that is moss and is not really going to revegetate on its own, so maybe they could plant a couple of trees within some of this area and let the understory kind of do its thing.
But we'd have to get a baseline, I mean, to see what's disturbed and what isn't.
Yeah, we could do that, well, not last, you know, obviously I'm still waiting for, you know, my 239 to finalize this thing, which I don't think it's going to change drastically, because between now and then, I could, I can make that determination. I don't have a problem with, like I just said, for that suggestion, I have no problem with letting things grow back naturally, as long as they're in the process. That's good. So we could probably work with that.
It's not a ton of area, really.
No, it's not, it's not. It's largely very wood.
Anthony, can I go back to the Conservation Board, their fourth point? I don't, the way I'm reading is they're, they're saying that that second driveway or that access drive is in the wetlands buffer setbacks.
It would alter an existing drainage swell, is what it says.
Would result in clearing and land disturbance at less than the required 125 wetland construction 100-feet wetland buffer setbacks.
So I can address that.
That's been the whole discussion. Well, let Anthony finish the report, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Anthony?
Okay, yeah, I'll finish this, and then we'll go back to that. The postal delivery house number for each lot, I removed the proposed structures in any building envelopes, a map notation regarding covenants and restrictions, and a common driveway easement, a notation regarding compliance with the zoning. I would just note on here, they have the wetland setbacks, you know, 125, 150, but it should just note on there 150, sanitary setback, structural setback, so just to clarify. It's what it's typically done on most, most wetlands, associated permits. Just indicated the open spaces to be dedicated to the town. I don't see that on here, but, yeah, so that would be that. And then I had graded out the access onto Seven Town, Seven Ponds Town Road discussion. Park fee is $2,500 for the one new lot. I put these two in here, maybe this has been done, and if it has, you know, then we check them off as satisfied, but this is remove the roadside stockade fence along Seven Ponds Toward Road, and then, actually, it should be prior to. And then reduce all fencing along Lower Seven Pond Road to four feet in height. And I put that in there. Declaration of covenants and restrictions, the standard, no further subdivision and no lot line changes without planning board approval. All the utilities and utility poles underground for, no new overhead, I should say, for the lots. The three inch rainfall, the speedies coverage per the town engineer. The retention of stormwater runoff before, during, and after construction. We note that lots one and two are subject to a naturally vegetated, non-disturbance, non-fertilization buffer shown on the filed map. Lot two is subject to a minimum buffer zone of 100 feet prohibiting, prohibiting turf fertilizers, pesticides. You can see there that it's measured to 100 feet. Lot two is subject to a minimum of 125 foot setback. Actually, it's lots one and two. I'm not sure why they didn't say that. These are all applicable to lots one and two.
The 125 foot setback, it's already developed. It wouldn't be subject to that.
It's, it, it, I'll rephrase that for the board. The new lot is subject to 100, is subject to vacant lot setbacks is what you're saying.
Yes.
And I'm, and that's true, and lot one would be subject to improved lots, which are lesser setbacks, actually. So I will fix that because I didn't distinguish that in here. You're gonna get a revised copy of this, by the way, when we put it back on. Notification of the Planning Division prior to construction. This is what we normally do for wetlands. Common driveway easement, lots one and two are subject to a common driveway easement. And then construction of the common driveway for lots one and two prior to the issuance of any COs. Six talks about the submission of an approval of a revegetation plan, which again, we'll take a look, see what really is needed, and if it's minimum, then we can do the minimum. Submission of a common driveway easement, submission of a title certification, mortgage consent if applicable, town approval of all legal documents, submission of an offer of dedication to the town for the open space and the town board acceptance of that. Submission of the Mylar's and paper prints for signature by the planning board and then to be recorded within sixty-two days of the map.
So Tom had a question.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Tom.
Go back to the wetland report.
Page four, number four.
Yeah.
The conservation.
Seems to be saying that the, that second driveway is...
Does it meet the setbacks?
Right.
That's, that's correct. It doesn't.
It does, for the most part, it does. There's really only one corner. On the map, it actually, there's arcs for each setback. So you can see the, where, where it turns there at the property line, around the shed on the neighbor's property. That little section is the only portion that does not meet the, the full setback.
So, just so the board knows then, then I would have to put in the resolution, because you're approving a wetlands permit ultimately also. This is, it serves as the wetlands permit for three years, but you'd have, and then we would have to put in there that, that driveway can be located, you know, however many feet from the...
It's not a structural, it's not, we're not creating a structure.
No. It's 82 feet at its closest point.
It's 82 feet, it's its closest point. I, I believe driveways are all subject to the same setbacks, wetland setbacks as, as any other structure, but you don't, you don't, as the wetlands approving board, you could set setbacks as deemed necessary. Sometimes you can't meet the setback, so.
Typically, you can get a 75 foot setback for a driveway as long as it's pervious.
Right. So would that be, you can do pervious driveway?
Absolutely. Yes.
That would be in the resolution?
Yeah.
I mean, the, the need for that second driveway is overwhelming in this location.
Yeah.
So would they have to, let's say the conservation goes back and says it doesn't meet the setback, we don't recommend it. Does that mean the planning board have to override them?
We would not override it.
You'd have to override them?
I mean, this just seems like an awful lot of relief to give as well.
So, you said about that?
I do wanna say, though, if you look at the buffer that's going from the wetland boundary, you can see the arcs there. So the first arc is 75 feet. The second arc is the 100 feet. So typically, it would be a 100 foot buffer. So as you can see, there's that whole triangle there that is in, in excess of 200 feet from the wetlands on Seven Ponds Town Road. So it's kind of a give and take on the, on the buffer, on lot two in that area where it's in excess of what it would normally be. It's more than 100 feet in some portions to kind of make up for the, the portions of the driveway that are within that setback.
But you're calculating somebody else's property in your mathematics, which, when you're looking at that.
No, not at all.
So what arcs are you looking at?
No, the arcs that are there. I'm talking about the triangle, how it comes to a point there at the entrance of the second driveway. You see the arcs. Anthony, you, can you show?
This one right here.
That's 75. The next one's 100. The next one's 125, and the following one, I believe, is 250.
That's the 200, 200.
The next one's 150, and then the following one is 200. So what I'm saying is that whole triangle of additional buffer beyond 100 feet in that area more than accommodates the portions that are within the 100 foot setback for the actual driveway.
I mean, the reality is, the main driveway is impassable for cer, for certain segments of the day. So the second driveway will be used. So it'll either be used with pervious surfaces and the, and the culverts to allow the water, or they're just gonna start using it. That's the reality. You can't get out the main driveway.
No, and, and your point then is that then the key is that we have plans.
Yes.
You know, and engineered, so.
Right, engineered plans, pervious surfaces.
To clarify.
Another point, I'm sorry, I was gonna say a point in there, so. Is that right now, if they built the driveway, which they could do, and the Highway could approve it, the setback would be 75.
Yeah.
Because it would be considered...
As part of an approved property.
An approved piece of property.
Right.
So they could get the wetlands permit and just straight away put 75 setback. Right now, they're proposing 81. So there is an argument that you look at the property as a developed piece of property as it is.
It is.
Yeah.
Good point.
So.
When I was working with Jackie Fenlin on this before she went to community preservation, her and I both met with the Highway Department at the property and had discussions with them of what they were looking for in the plans, and that was how those plans were developed. So the comments that they have, we can certainly address whatever the comment, the one comment that they came back with, and that should be simple. But the purpose of it is, is to maintain the allowance for the water to flow. That's their main concern, for the drainage from the five corners that are right there. So we're, we're fine with that.
And that, and they're, and you're saying that there is, is not going to impact, this driveway is not going to impact that swell or the wetlands?
No, the, the purpose of, of the, the plan is so that they'd be able to pass over the swell with the culvert that would still function for the allowance of the drainage coming from the road that heads actually towards the wetlands that are part of the open space.
So it requires a culvert?
Yes.
It's already there, isn't it?
No.
No.
It's a concrete swell, actually.
Also, yeah, there's a concrete, there's something structural, that's a concrete swell.
Right. And that, then that sort of ends, and then it just, it's just the grade.
I mean, I, I personally have trouble with that logic in the sense of to try to eliminate a traffic jam versus the environment impacting the swell, the wetlands. They knew that when they bought the property. They knew it when they wanted to subdivide the property. We all deal with traffic. Is it seasonal? Is it all year long? That's really not, we're not looking at those issues in a subdivision necessarily.
Traffic.
So, yes, but it also impacts what I consider to be an important environmental issue here whereby the first highway supervisor said, "Don't go near it." The second, the newer, the new highway supervisor, I'm not quite sure what he said, because he didn't say no, but he didn't say yes. He just requested a revised document in the plan. So I don't, I'm not comfortable with that non-sign off.
Well, the, just, if I may, the first highway supervisor had initially said no, and that was where we met his people out there at that time. All of this was done under Alex Greger. So we came to an agreement at the site, because we went there in the field, looked at it together as a group, as the planning department, the Highway Department, and me representing the applicant. And then I conveyed that to the engineer who did the plans in accordance mainly with what the Highway Department was seeking.
So Alex Greger then suggested engineering plans for you to use, to use that driveway?
His representatives, yes. Two of his representatives that I believe are still the people who are reviewing the plans right now.
So he wasn't totally against this, you're saying?
No.
No, I mean, it was, it was initial, and then it was, you know.
His concern was, was, there's a lot of water that flows.
Yes.
I think it was Seven Ponds, that's Seven Bonds, that's eight ponds.
That's major.
There's a reason why it's Seven Ponds Town Road.
Right.
And he, he was, his concern was getting that water down, continuing the swell. Once it was demonstrated that that was achievable, easily achievable, with simple engineering, he, he was comfortable.
Well, I could, you know, because I'll have to revise this anyway, because we gotta address the wetland setbacks and everything, which you have to, as part of the permit, just like, you know, the Environment Division, but we could set the, you know, mitigation parameters in there, pervious surface and stuff like that, which is not currently set in the resolution.
That was my point, because if we don't, the driveway is going there anyway. So, it's academic. There, there's no way out the other way. They're gonna be using that driveway. So do you wanna have pervious surfaces, a regulatory element where you have inspections and the culvert and moving the water, or just let them just run their vehicles across to get out?
Well, what's going to happen with lot one? What do they use now?
They're, they're gonna use their, their, the driveway.
Well, the reality, they'll probably grant a private easement for lot one. It's a family, I'm assuming it's a family compound.
To remind the board, yes. This right now is a family property. The whole purpose of the subdivision is to provide a secondary lot for their children in the future, so they can build a second house for their family.
So what I, I think if I understand what Dennis is saying correctly, it might be expected that the folks in lot two are going to allow the people in lot one to now go across the back end and use that driveway also.
I would imagine if it's part of the family. I don't know that that would happen if it's not part of the family.
And that's not, I mean, it's not part of the plan, but it might be a very real expectation.
Should provide, yeah.
I, I, to some of the board members that have been here longer than me, I, I don't, since I've been here, I don't think we've approved two driveways for a property. Maybe we have sometime in the past, and I'm certainly empathetic to the backup at that intersection and a lot of other intersections in the town. And a lot, in my old job, I used to get a lot of calls from people that couldn't get out of their driveways, Lumber Lane being one of them.
Yes.
This is the problem of being over built where the, the streets and roads we live on.
I, I don't know what the perfect answer is here, but I guess my question may be to, have we done this before, and what circumstances do we allow property owners to have two driveways?
They, they have two.
Well, they have the common driveway to get out onto that road. I remember when you and Jackie were working on this a long time ago.
Yeah.
And Jackie was pleading the case of this family. And we had big discussions about the environmental impact on this swell.
We've, we've spent hours on this application.
And, you know, I certainly was not satisfied. In any event, that, I've said what I have to say, so let's move forward. Where are we with this?
So that was the pre-app resolution.
I just have one more thing to say. That during the summer, I did correspond with Anthony regarding the fence along Seven Ponds Town, and he did let me know that they could have, have it removed this summer. So when my clients were here, they did have a landscaper come and take out all of the dilapidated portions of the fence along the property line. I did go out and take a bunch of photos. I can submit that to the record. I don't know that I did. I think I was waiting for this day to come and never actually printed them, so I can certainly submit that.
This vast tract of wetlands north of your incredible property is privately held. As part of this simple two lot subdivision, that entire tract is gonna now be transferred to public with incredible environmental benefit.
Yeah, but they can't build on it anyway.
They can't, but it's privately held.
Well, they're not gonna, can't do anything with it.
They can't legally, but there's, there's opportunity for mischief. When you have private, you know, open space and private property, there's no way to, you know.
There's opportunity to mischief, mischief even in a fully regulated lot.
Well, it's much, much higher for...
What do you want to do, Anthony? You're still waiting for...
Can we put this back on for January 11th?
Uh, yeah.
Because I got...
Because you're waiting for the Conservation Board.
Conservation, sorry, the, the resolution was already done, we'll tidy it up like I'm supposed to, and I'll get to...
Get some engineering comments.
Can I just ask one question? There's a park fee even with the open space dedication?
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Nice try, though.
I've heard both sides of that argument. So we're just gonna do an extension until January 11th?
Extension to January 11th. Motion by Dennis, second by Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the extension. Six in favor. One absent. Thank you. Thank you. Anthony, what have you got now?
Twenty-one Columbia, Inc. Was that 18?
Number 19.
Number 19. This was a, I say six or seven lot subdivision, because we'll see how the pre-application process goes. You know, there's always Health Department issues and this, that, and the other thing, the affordable housing component. This is on Columbia Avenue. This is in West Hampton. It involves two properties. It's larger property, which is technically landlocked, but they also own the front piece here, which is what fronts on Columbia, so that's how the access would be done. They're providing a yield map. This yield map, it's our 40 zoning district. So this yield map actually shows six lots with 60,000 square feet each. And they're showing it like that because they're shown as flag lots. And I, you know, they do show, though, a road with, you know, technically a cul-de-sac, so my guess is that you may see, I don't know, because this is gonna be a pre-app preliminary final situation. My guess is preliminary, you could see an extra lot come out of this as a result. I don't know.
Why aren't they just showing a road? Why, why all these, why is it a flag lot?
That, that is probably just a, you know, who knows? Well, they do show, like I see, they outlined, you know.
Yeah, I mean, comply, they have, they have the 50 foot.
Yeah, they have the 50 foot there.
Well, they can submit whatever they want. I mean, this, this is...
It's the pre-application. They had submitted something else recently. I was just trying to get them through the process so I could get them to a point where I can make comments on it.
Did, did they submit a cluster?
Yep. To see, now, they, then they submitted, three, four, five, six, seven. If they, assuming a six lot yield, then they showed a seven lot plan, the 10% increase in density for Long Island workforce housing. Again, they show it as all flag lots, but I, we probably couldn't do that design like that. The code really doesn't allow for it. So well, these are the issues that we could outline in the pre-app. And then they do also show a seven lot plan, and they show open space here, a chunk of open space. The property doesn't, isn't adjacent to any other open space, so there would be nowhere to locate it that it would join it, so that's an issue that we...
That's our 40 zoning?
It's our 40.
It says our 40.
It's our 40.
Yeah.
Because all those, all those lots on Columbia Drive, they, they don't, they're, they're pretty small lots. Whole file mat, I'll lift it up. I'm just surprised it's our 40.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's why cluster plan, you'll get smaller lots that are probably more consistent with...
Can you zoom in just a little bit, Anthony?
What's that?
Can you zoom in just a little bit?
The aerial?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the open space doesn't make any sense.
No, there's nothing...
No, I mean, they, they submitted, it was one of the completeness issues. They submitted it, and, and I have met with the applicant. Look, when we do our pre-app report, we're gonna look at the cluster plan. We'll look like I normally do, see, can we accomplish what you want with easements and buffers, for example? There may be alternatives to an open space plan, if, you know, if it gets dedicated to the town.
Why would the town take that?
I understand. That just, the code requires the submission of a cluster plan. The planning board asked for one, so, you know, that's why we got it. They're not going to ask for one, so, you know, that's why we got it. But at this stage of the game, not, you know, it's not perfect. But, you know, the question is, do we have enough information that we can provide a good report and some direction for the applicant? And I think we do at this point. And so I recommend complete and scheduling for February.
This is pre-preapplication?
Pre-application.
Is that, okay. The eighth?
Yeah, February eighth.
Okay, motion to deem a complete instead of hearing for Feb. eighth. Motion by George, second by Gloria. All in, six in favor, one absent.
And then sixty-four Lewis Road, another application that I've taken over for another planner that was here. It's called sixty-six Lewis Road. The address is actually sixty-four Lewis Road. It's got existing residents on there. It's in the Aquafoot Protection Agricultural Overlay District of Central Pine Barrens. That was previously deemed incomplete. We have an application to create one, two, three lots. The previous application was deemed incomplete. There was just some minor mapping stuff that was missing. I didn't review this one actually, so it wasn't my checklist. They subsequently submitted a revised plan. Also, there's an adjacent scene of easement here which was missing from the plan, so that was one of the items. So, in any case, they've submitted all the information. I'm also recommending deeming this complete and scheduling for February eighth.
Okay, motion?
Motion.
By Gloria, second by Craig. All in favor? Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent.
And then two oh four Butter WB. This is a, you all know this. This is the Butter Lane Physical Fitness Facility, the existing building. We previously deemed this one incomplete. I was missing a few things. They've given it to me. In this case, we had a hearing, pre-submission. We had a hearing at the zoning board, so I'd recommend deeming it complete and waiving a hearing with a thirty day. There's no new construction here, so.
So complete and thirty days.
Yeah.
Okay, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, and second by Dennis. All in favor? Opposed, extensions. Six in favor, one absent.
Gear up for our first marijuana, marijuana public hearing.
Kansas.
Sorry, I tried Kansas here.
Anthony, are you going to give me something?
I'm going to go through that.
Okay, and you'll take a look at it. Wave?
Oh, we're going back?
So I'm going to try and do myself.
Oh, where are you? Okay, sorry.
Number seventeen?
Yes.
Number seventeen.
So number seventeen is two fifty-one Majors Town. This is a commercial site which contains gas fueling station, a large oil tank here. You can see it. It's actually very large, large enough that you can actually walk into. And what they're looking to do is actually demolish all the existing structures and create a subdivision of four lots. Let me just look at that. So that's the subdivision, that's the survey.
So it's an R twenty?
It's an R twenty. This is the yield map. They can get up to six lots. And this is their preferred plan with the common driveway, which there's some issues with that, but we'll proceed with that. However, there's some information that is needed in order for us to proceed with the application and review. So we're asking that you deem it incomplete. And you have the resolution in front of you to deem the application incomplete until such time as we receive the items on the draft checklist, which I have if you want to see that as well.
Have they submitted an environmental audit?
They did actually submit an environmental audit and there were a couple of groundwater tests that came up pretty high, above the standards. So that will have to be part of the remediation.
That thing's been a fuel depot forever. That was, that was the SA, SA oil facility.
Yeah. It's kind of a mess. To put it nicely.
Yep. Back then, it was North Sea.
Yeah. Okay, motion to deem this incomplete by George, second by Gloria, all in favor? Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent. Eighteen, two fifteen East Montauk Highway.
Yes, this was a subdivision application. The action deadline is supposed to be today. However, we received an email from the applicant's agent dated November twenty-ninth, and they asked that it be postponed enacting on, on, on the report until January. So it's an extension.
January eleventh. Okay, extension to January eleventh. Motion by Gloria, second by Craig. All in favor? Opposed, extension, six in favor.
Teresa?
Thanks, Teresa.
I wonder about that two fifty-one. That's one of the few areas north of the highway where our zoning, I don't know if they comply with the groundwater or health department zone for that density.
Okay, I'll double check if it's groundwater, but it's a five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that would be one area versus the happening.
It's typically north of Southampton Village. There's a few spots at Bridgehampton.
Yep. Okay, good point.
Okay.
Claire?
My first one is Broda. And Steve Kylie is on, Kevin.
Oh, okay.
And this is a request. So can you recall, Broda was a pre-app report for a two-lot subdivision? Please. I'm just going to give you a background. We'll jump in.
Where's seven ponds?
Number fifteen.
Number fifteen.
Fifteen.
And so this is his proposal. So it was a two-lot subdivision over a flag lot. There's a lot of public interest.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yes, yes.
Very spirited publicity.
Everybody's.
Landlot peace, yep.
Everybody has a fair. So.
No.
Is that you?
Not Bob.
Steve Kylie. So where are we?
Oh, yeah, I remember this one.
So what happened is that they've been in negotiations with CPF to purchase the second lot as an open space parcel. So there would be only one lot for developments created. And that would be through a waiver provision of three thirty, I think it's forty-four. Oh, sorry, two ninety-two dash forty-four, which allows for a waiver to allow the second lot to be purchased or donated to nature conservancy. You know, there's a lot of them be done, but one of them is CPF. So that would be creating the lot as you see adjacent to other lots and creating the open space which would be adjacent to an open space parcel to the north. Why don't I pull it up on the, on the area for you?
Claire, is this application contingent on the CPF purchase?
The subdivision contingents. They would create a second lot and yes, we, I mean, it could be yes. No, it has to be. It has to be purchased. Yeah, it has to be, yes. They couldn't create the lot and then say, as you see, it's going to be referred as open space. That will be the plan that you stamp as a waiver. Yeah.
Is it customary to be at this phase in an application without the CPF purchase being finalized?
This doesn't happen that commonly, but there's nothing wrong with it.
Okay.
Per se, but it's just, you haven't seen it a lot because they don't have it.
Okay.
And then, yes, do you want the applicant to speak and clarify something?
I was just asking counsel, that's all.
Can you give us your name for the record, please, Mr. Kylie?
Sure. Stephen Kylie, the applicant.
Can you increase your audio?
Let me try moving it closer.
There you go. It's better.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes, much.
Okay. Thank you. So, again, I'm here this afternoon, now or this evening, to seek a section two ninety-two dash forty-four B one waiver for my client. And that section states that the planning board shall waive the application process and fees if you meet three requirements. One, is create no more than two lots. Two, the lots after the performance of zoning. And three, one lot has to be acquired by the town for open space. Here, the subdivision proposed will in fact create two lots, as you say, conform fully to the CRAP zoning requirements. For example, both lots have at least eighty thousand square feet. And as far as the third one, you know, a lot being acquired by the town for open space, we are currently in contract with the town to sell the resulting lot for open space. And in fact, it would be the last, one of the last pieces to create a trail system from Deerfield to Little Noack Pass. And we also already had a requisite public hearing for the purchase and there was no opposition. And I just want to bring your attention to a couple things. In the twenty twenty-one CPF project plan, it lists aggregation of greenbelt areas as a major priority. So as you can see, there's already an easement on the rear of the property that adjoins a property that the town of Southampton owns in open space. And it adjoins to the north another major tract of land owned by the town. So that's how this aggregation is going to occur, again, to have a trail from Little Noack Pass all the way to Deerfield. And then if you also look at chapter five of the comprehensive plan, it's entitled community enhancements. The top goal, the top goal of that chapter is creation of greenlands. And this will effectuate that goal. So the waiver is actually the last step close. And I believe that we need the requirements for that waiver.
Maybe Claire can show us the access on the map. Can you trace the access, Claire?
So this easement?
Right, blue?
Yeah.
It's an easement?
No, it's, it's a lot, it is part of this lot, but it's got, it is going to be the access for this parcel. And then it's going to go down. And then this will also be a smaller access for the town parcel of this area.
Yeah, so that, that hole is about twenty-five feet right now. So we would divide it fifteen feet to service my client's lot and ten feet to service as a trail for the open space. So it would be split.
So that blue, that short and blue there is a current flag to the, to the existing lot?
It is existing.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
It is the current flag for the existing lots, the blue, on the, on the area. I don't know.
Unfortunately, for some reason, I can't see what you're looking at.
That's okay. It is the flag for the lot. Yeah, you can see it on the plan.
I don't, I don't know if we want to create a fifteen-foot dogleg that long, but that's a discussion you can have when we divide it.
You'd be giving a waiver.
Is, is part of that dogleg going to the town as well?
Yes.
Through an easement.
Through part of it and an easement.
You want a fifteen-foot, how long is that dogleg to the property?
Pretty long.
After a heavy snowfall to get emergency equipment, two vehicles passing? You want fifteen?
Well, there wouldn't be two vehicles. The hole for the green space is only going to be a foot track.
I know, but I mean, you could get three trail corridors. You don't need ten foot, I mean, it's ideal to have ten foot, but.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no. We're, we're open to many larger.
I'd rather see twenty and five.
I think it's going to be, I'm going to suggest it be twenty.
Yeah.
And that the town has five, and the town has a five-foot easement to a lot with trail. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
That law will be completely conforming in terms of access.
A five-foot trail doesn't exist. There's no.
Yeah, plus twenty, that makes it conforming.
Yeah.
Excuse me, twenty would make it conforming as well.
Right. Good. Yeah. So Steve, we'll talk about that. But if you're prepared for that, that's how we'll do it. I looked at it. I agree.
Absolutely. I made total sense.
Okay, great.
So what is our action here, Claire?
No, there's no action yet. We wanted to review it with you. It is your waiver to grant that it does say, if you meet their criteria, you shall do it. So there's no referrals, just nothing. You're granting a waiver and then at the end of the day, the secretary does stamp a plan. But it'd be very important that that lot will be flagged as an open space parcel that will be purchased by the town.
Okay.
Yep.
Are we doing that?
For some reason, I don't know why it's changed, but we were supposed to get an acquisition resolution issued by the town board after the public hearing, subject to your waiver and other requirements. But they wanted to make sure that, I guess, you were fine with it. But again, since I meet, you know, the three requirements, it does say shall. And again, this is going to go a long way to create a vast greenbelt, you know, for the town, for the residents to utilize.
I did review it with Jackie Dunleavy today too. And this is totally in line with what she's been proposing for the CPF.
Claire, I'm kind of confused because what you passed out to me, I'm looking at three parcels that are all well identified as Lot One, and two of them say that there's houses and wells on.
Those are existing.
It's this. This is Lot One, this is Lot Two. This is the subdivision.
That's part of the overall subdivision. She's confusing the other, this is smaller Lot One. That was the old.
This is what we're.
That was the old Lot One of the subdivision.
And so this is going to come all the way in.
Oh, okay.
Access to this Lot One, and then this is the open space. And this will, it's going to be divided between the town, trails, get five feet, and then the rest will go to the access.
You can't walk on five feet.
It's going to be ten. The trail will be ten feet. It'll have a five-foot easement. That's my suggestion, onto their twenty-foot driveway. But they will have the fifteen feet at least to build on and then, but they will own twenty, which is legal. That's conforming.
So they're not going to be able to vegetate at all on the driveway.
Well.
I'm, I, as, as somebody that's a hiker, this does not seem.
It's going to be referred to trous.
Yes, so I will.
It's going to be referred to trous in that form which we're saying, which is twenty feet with the ten foot ease, making it whole to the ten foot for the easement.
Ideally, the client would want a small buffer between the trail and the driveway absolutely and keep it within.
No, we're not referring it. CPF is going to refer it. This is their baby, so I'm going to have them refer it to it.
Okay, I'm just, I'm, I'm quite, I'm cautiously, cautiously questioned.
Yeah. No, it's good. That's good. These are good questions. Yeah. So it's going to be referred to trous before CPF goes to action. So if everything is going well, you'll see it probably until January eleventh, which means.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, and thank you for accommodating, if you'd like to.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Loes and fishes, Claire?
Loes and fishes. So this is before the zoning board appeals. I have draft documents for you.
Claire?
You have your suit lead agency, and this is for secret purposes.
So we're suing.
Well, that's definitely, and then I'm suggesting secret. I'm going to take the last one, sorry. This is for you.
You've done your referrals, Julie.
ZDA referred it to us.
Yeah, we did that. You did the referral.
Yeah, and then ZDA relinquished lead agency on the sixteen. And so the, there would be two actions we could put in, run a resolution if we consider it. And that would be to assume a lead agency. If you're fine with the neg dac, we would assume, document a dac in the case.
So there's a request?
Very loud.
To relieve granting a parking variance from any of the.
So call, just explain your letter that you submitted.
Sure.
Good evening, members of the board. It's good to see you. Carl, but it costs eight sixty Montauk Highway for the applicant. One of our neighbors, who is represented by counsel here today, has asked us to submit to the zoning board an alternative application, not withdraw the one we have, but as an alternative, the removal of the northernmost seven spots. I'm not sure if you have the site plan.
I have it. Hold up. And I have copies, Steve.
So Claire can zoom in a bit?
Those seven up above, yeah.
So a parking variance to remove those seven place, spots. The applicant has no objection to that, but we would like, you know, obviously, the board to consider our primary. to consider our primary ask for relief, but this and the alternative, which would accommodate all the concerns of the neighbors. So as part of that, we submitted a letter to Claire because, uh, rather than delay the process further, we'd like you to consider that alternative application, uh, as part of your secret determination today, and perhaps offer referral comments on that as well, as that has not been, uh, presented to the board yet. We have discussed with counsel for the board. She believes that the application is ade- adequately noticed for us to simply ask for this additional relief without renotice, without, without renoticing. But obviously, they're going to want your input on removal of those seven spaces, and that should be factored into your, uh, secret determination. So with that, I'd ask you consider what was agendaed for today in light of that alternative proposal, and perhaps if you have any comments that, uh, Claire, include them as a referral.
Well, those are the seven spaces that I had issue with to begin with.
What does that do to, how many spots do we need versus?
Thirty-eight are required. Two are now being waived through your provision of providing cross-access between this property and the adjacent property. Um, so it's thirty-six. So this would be down to twenty-nine related to the uses on the park. You know, obviously, there's a shared parking agreements between the two sites, as it is.
Right.
Um, so.
Would that take it into consideration when the, when the calculation was made initially?
The, uh, shared parking, that's more based on, if it was shared parking, you'd probably want some kind of analysis about the use if you were to bases on that. But I would say that your cross-access could allow you for more than the two spaces that are being waived right now. I don't have a calculation on that, uh, but there could be some more leeway with the seven spaces. But what he's asking for you, right, the seconds, which is kind of like not with a lot of information, is for, would you support a variance to eliminate the requirement for those seven spaces?
So it creates a wider exit path, is that correct?
No, no, the northernmost.
Just lap the seven spaces off.
There's no exit up there.
Take the spaces away close.
Oh, the circular, the circulatory.
Circulation, that's what I'm talking about.
It would create, I gue- I suppose, a wider circulation.
And what about that buffer? I mean, you were going to have a, would you augment the buffer then between?
Well, we would plant it in line with the, the code standards, sure.
Yeah. Because I think we had certainly, I'd mentioned an increased buffer.
Yeah. Do you want a copy? I think I have.
No, that's okay. You can just put any size.
I'll remind the board, uh, just so for context, this site plan, there was a site plan approved on this lot with actually, I think it was twenty-one spaces lining the entire northern section.
Oh, I remember that.
It was a different animal, though.
So this would be about forty-five feet then, right, if they, so this is twenty plus fifteen? Oh, twenty plus fifteen, thirty-five, thirty-five for setback.
I can't say exactly, you know, I want, I would want the architect to weigh in.
It's roughly thirty-five feet that would be achieved.
Right. But I think it creates, um, a, a, an augmented planted buffer between this development and the driveway and that property that's on the other side. Think it can achieve that?
Was the plan still to plant a line of, uh?
Two lines of.
Two lines of greens along there. You're not looking to.
And then I'll remind you that there's a.
There's a fence.
There's a fence, and then there's a flag strip, flag pole driveway, and then, you know.
So, I mean, there's already a lot of, I mean, what are we giving up in terms of providing a development aside with seven less spaces for, you know, the same rel- pretty much the same amount of vegetation and, 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 uh, you know, the same sort of vegetated buffer that we have. It's a, I mean, I'm just raising it as an issue. It's seven spaces. Where people are going to park.
I look at it as circulation.
But that doesn't affect the circulation, though, Jack. You still have to come around this way and come down through. It's, it's not really improving circulation in the, in the park and in the space.
Well, you've got to get out to, uh, Butter Lane, right?
Oh, yeah. So you're still having this. This is all happening.
It doesn't do anything with circulation.
And then it's connecting here.
Yeah.
And it's, just refresh my memory, it's the, the ha- there's a house, and then there's retail.
Single-family residence there, and then two retail.
Retail.
Yes, each with two units.
Go back up to the house, Claire?
Yeah. So this has been redesigned since you, even your pre-submission that was issued. Uh, initially, it still had the parking here, and through, I think, negotiations or just consideration, they've created more of open space here than the house, um, and then the parking kind of was, you know, relocated to this area in between, and this is the connection now.
The parking for the house is where?
Uh, it could be here. Obviously, there's a drop-off.
It's all, they're all, it's all amalgamated or a- a- amalgamated.
There's no specific parking, says X, Y, Z.
Yeah.
Nothing was signed.
Right.
I will say those spaces are a pretty long walk from the retail stores, you know, when the, when the, I assumed that that would kind of be where the people that live in the house would park, but.
Yeah, I, I just assumed that those.
Where to find a spot?
I mean, practically speaking, those are going to be the last seven spaces taken on this lot. Meaning, if anything else is available, that's where people are going to park.
Yeah.
No, I thought it was office spaces. Retail?
Retail slash office.
When you last approved it, it was a restaurant with apartments above.
That's old.
That's the old, but.
That's the old, old.
Are there any apartments above the?
No.
No?
So this has reduced septic, reduced tra- parking, reduced traffic, and you neg dac'd the last one.
Well, here's the other thing. I just did some quick numbers. So, uh, as I said, the cross-access, two spaces were being waived because of the cross-access. Well, just even looking at these two square footages, I did a quick number. They're about a thousand square feet apiece, and if you use the number, which is divided by two hundred, you would get five spaces each. That would, besides the two that you're granting, the seven could be waived. You could grant the wa- you could waive it.
Just inside plan review.
Without the ZBA.
Just inside plan review.
Just inside plan review.
I'm not sure what you, what you accommodate.
So cross-access, ch- cross-access, which provides access for public par- like, public access, not just your, your own private property, can be used in, under three thirty dash one hundred C, which was the waiver that was being granted for the two spaces. But that area actually can accommodate up to ten spaces.
What area? I'm sorry.
These two proposed cross-access easements, generally speaking, add up to two thousand.
So we should get more credit for it?
You could get more credit if the planning board now, if the planning board makes that determination.
And more parking space.
And you could waive up to, up to the, like, nine, so the nine could cover it. The ten, it's up to ten.
I think it makes for a better plan.
Yeah.
Personally.
So if you, how do we proceed? Because we could easily amend our relief requested, which it would just be minor dimensional relief for the southern structures.
Yeah, you'd be doing thirty-five feet setback. So provide a new plan. We could do it on the eleven.
Do we need to provide a new plan?
Well, to the ZBA, you will.
To the ZBA, yes. No, we would just, we wouldn't have to give them a new plan. We'd just withdraw the relief requests, and then they wouldn't even weigh in on that.
I think.
Yeah, for the ZBA.
I'm sorry, I think you're still asking, I think you're still asking from fifty to fifteen, right? You'd be asking from fifty to thirty-five?
At the fifteen.
Am I mistaken?
Fifty to thirty, oh, we, we would still, yes, you're right.
You still need the setback relief, uh, fifteen feet, but that's minor.
Yeah, we would still need the setback. You're right. Yes.
So this has the cross-access in two spots?
Two spots here, but it's also here. So they're going to have to, you know, at the end of the day, you're going to have a site plan that shows it here. That's just not being asked to give relief, but it will be cross-access with a formal easement.
So the question is, eh, whatever the speediest way to get there is, how can we be assured that we would grant, that we wouldn't face roadblocks later down the road if this board wouldn't grant that?
Well, we'd support it. We'd support that.
With some information in there.
That's, that would be enough, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have the minutes of this meeting call? Yes.
The board's acceptable, too, right?
Can I get a, can I get a roll vote, please?
Yeah.
No, I'm just kidding.
Have you seen a checklist?
So what are we doing, Claire?
So we could do this.
We're assuming lead agency?
Um, yeah, we could definitely assume lead agency. You want to do as a separate resolution? I had one, doing both, that and neg dac, but it's up to you.
Well, we haven't reviewed it.
No, you haven't reviewed it yet. So, I know, it is a long day.
I know.
So let's assume, let's assume lead agency.
When, when I looked at it on, online, it looked like you had some stuff marked yes in the overall, but then there was nothing identified within.
Yes, and I fixed that, and that's, that's the new documents you have.
Okay.
Have it all answered with some verbiage at the end. If you, um.
So I haven't seen it.
So let's hang on to this.
You can assume lead agency today.
Mm-hmm.
We can bring this back up on the eleven, and we could do a neg dac if we have a plan with, uh, maybe even with the, the waivers, waiver talked about there, and I can look at, I can work with you on the language.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
And then you could actually then issue reports saying, planning board's prepared to waive the seven spaces to the north. A variance of thirty-five feet would be necessary-ish instead of fifty.
I think we're before the ZBA again, the following Thursday?
I thought it was the second Jan- meeting in January, but I might, might be mistaken on that.
So we'd be before that?
As long as you're before that, yes.
We would be the eleven.
We would be the eleven.
So we'd assume lead agency and do secret at the next one.
Absolutely. Okay, okay. So motion to assume lead agency on Loews and Fishes. Motion by, uh, Tom, second by, uh, Dennis, all in favor. All in. Both abstentions, six in favor, one absent.
And I'll have the secret documents for you.
Perfect.
Yep, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. That was a great, fine.
I didn't hold planning there. It's weird.
Good thing. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Actually, I'm not going anywhere at this point, so I'll see you.
Oh, you're, oh, you're the, yeah.
Yeah, I'm the sacrificial lamb.
Do you want to do the wave center with staff, and I'm here to assist?
Yeah.
Um, that's a completeness item.
Wave center for veterinarian, the one on, uh, twenty-seven.
Yeah, might as well give it a shot. I'll make it quick.
Wake up the area.
That's right near Hampton Dog.
Yeah, I've been working on the two veterinary services. They got a little confusing. Uh, this is in.
Oh, oh, okay.
In for completeness. This is wave some, uh, wave center.
Yeah.
This is the former Ethan Allen.
Yeah.
Yep.
They have to sign up.
Or you can put, uh, you can go to the G S.
Yep, all right.
Yeah, that's just the property. So it's the front building here, and the whole space will be used for a back office.
I think you'd be tempted to have those finishes today.
So this was deemed incomplete, uh, on November ninth. Uh, since then, we have received the variance. Uh, variance has been granted by the ZBA. So, uh, they were granted a front yard setback of thirty-nine point seven, where fifty was required, a side on the north side of ten point five, where fifty was required, and on the south side, thirty-four point nine. Type two action. Uh, it's an interior renovate, uh, remodel. There are three, uh, we're, on this site, there's also a cell phone tower and a contractor's storage facility.
Really?
Uh, but otherwise, it is just the, uh, the existing building being renovated, and the planning division deems it complete or would like to deem it complete with your approval.
And we set a public hearing.
Yeah, this one, okay, this one, because they're very anxious to open again for the summer. Um, could we sneak this on for the twenty-fifth? Uh, it would be the fifth item. But this, I think, will have no public comments. There's been no public comments to date, so.
Okay.
We'll put them on first. I think it'd be a open, closed. Now.
So can.
Pardon the applicant not to speak.
February?
Before, actually, January twenty-fifth, if you're acceptable.
Oh, January twenty-fifth.
That would be five items, so I don't want to overwant you, but I think this would be an easy one. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
January twenty-fifth.
That was, yeah, they gave you a real easy one.
Motion by Dennis to deem this complete and set a public hearing for January twenty-fifth.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria. Six in favor, one absent.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
I hope, uh, we couldn't, we never ask what's in those cookies, given the upcoming application. Are we being somehow threatened?
They're not from Carl.
Attitude adjustment cookies? You're walking down these cookies.
Bringing samples to them?
So the next items, uh, there is a series of extensions.
Let's do them. Rock and roll.
Yeah, it's a ninety-day extension, extension for submission plans.
Motion.
Do we have a, a date?
Ninety days. So, um.
Number twenty-three.
What's the name of the?
He's called Mobile Home Park.
Okay, thank you.
And then it'd be ninety days, and that would be March fourteen.
March fourteen? March fourteen. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor. Both abstentions, six in favor, one absent. Number twenty-four, Blessing Fields.
Blessing Fields is a one-month extension till January eleven, uh, for the action deadline.
To Jan. eleven. Motion.
Motion.
By Gloria, second by Dennis, all in favor. All in. Both abstentions, six in favor, one absent. Number twenty-five, seven twenty Butter Lane.
Extension, uh, for ninety days for submission of plans.
Extension ninety days, so that goes to March fourteen?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by Gloria, all in favor. All in. Both abstentions, six in favor, one absent.
And Puccio.
Puccio, number twenty-six.
January eleven, twenty twenty-four.
Extension to January eleven. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by George, second by Craig, all in favor.
Hi.
Both abstentions, se- six in favor, one absent. We've done it.
I think we've done it.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Twenty-one.
For two minutes, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We adjourned?
Yes, we are. Oh, we adjourned. Second by Gloria, all in favor.
Number twenty-one. It was twenty-one on today. Two oh four butter, I have.